Live with the Zoom.
And I will take, there you go, recording. And you want to let me know when you're ready for a flag?
I will, we're gonna do flag after we read the announcements. I do not have on the agenda notice.
Oh.
That's right, I have a, I have a generic one. Okay, I'm sorry, we're live, we're open?
Should be, we're recording.
Alright, very good. The January 2021 regular meeting of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Time of the board's reorganization in January of last year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year 2020, which included this meeting, the first meeting of 2021. Notice of the schedule of the board's regular meetings was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. Tonight's meeting was listed, notice of schedules of regular meetings. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. In addition, a copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Mike, anything further with regard to Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we should also indicate for the record that as a result of the COVID pandemic, when the board made the determination to continue its meetings remotely via the Zoom platform, that we issued a supplemental Open Public Meetings Act notice that issued in the usual course. It was sent to two newspapers, provided to the clerk, posted on the bulletin board, posted on the website also, and also sent to any interested parties that requested copies of same in accordance with the statute. The notice also provides that if anyone had any questions about how to join the meeting remotely, it gave an email address and a cellphone number for the board secretary. And it also provided that if anyone had any difficulties during the meeting in joining or participating, that they could reach out to the secretary either via email or cell. And it also provided instructions for those interested parties who wanted to view the materials in support of the application that are posted on the website. And if they needed a hard copy, it gave instructions as to how to obtain the hard copies as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, the experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in the Borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's quasi-judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and councilor. The zoning board does not enact the Borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council has that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the Borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always on the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh in detriment of the zone plan. Variances relate to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Before we do roll call, Michael, should we swear in the new members prior to that?
Yes, we should, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to?
Yes, so I have, first I have Mr. Nocesny. So Mr. Nocesny, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Peter Nocesny, you do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform the duties of member of the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough Fairhaven according to best of your abilities to help you God. Say I do?
I do.
And we're gonna ask you to sign off on that oath, Mr. Nocesny, and then you can return that to Judy at the board office. I also have Mr. Ryan. Marty, I asked you to raise your right hand, please. Martin Ryan, you do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state under the authority of the people and that you will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform the duties of member of the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough Fairhaven according to best of your abilities to help you God. Please say I do?
I do.
And we're gonna ask you, Mr. Ryan, to sign off on your oath as well. And we also have Mr. Shiovetti. If you'd raise your right hand, Mr. Shiovetti. Alfred Shiovetti III, you do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform the duties of alternate number two member of the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough Fairhaven according to the best of your abilities to help you God. Please say I do?
I do.
And we'll ask you to sign off on your oath and return that to Judy at the board office as well. Now, I, that's the three members that I have that are either re or newly appointed, Judy. Did we cover them all?
Yes.
There we, there we go, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Congratulations on the reappointed members and welcome back, Mr. Shiovetti. Judy, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Nocesny.
Here.
Mrs. Quigley. Quigley?
You're muted, Pat.
You're muted, Pat.
I saw her before.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Ridgway. Is that a here?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Ludman?
Here.
Dr. Lauffer?
Here.
Mr. Cincella?
Here.
Mr. Shiovetti?
Here.
Your leader.
Here. Joe, if you can call up that flag, if everybody could join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This being the board's first meeting of 2021, we have some reorganization matters to address. We have done the oaths of office and we've sworn in our new members. We need nominations for chair.
I believe that Mr. Leader has done such an outstanding job that I would feel remiss if I were not to nominate him again to serve as chairman of the zoning board for 2021.
Second.
Anybody have any comments? Objections?
He needs a haircut.
No. No promises. Okay. Roll call, please, Judy.
Mr. Nocesny.
Yeah.
Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway. Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Mr. Leader.
I'll stand. Thank you, everybody. Your support means a lot to me. Appreciate it very much. Nominations for vice chair.
Well, I think Ms.
Happy to serve again unless somebody else has a desire to.
Mr. Nocesny does a great job with his vice chairmanship and I would like to nominate him for to continue in that position.
Thank you, Ms. Quigley.
Second.
Who is that second?
Second. Either.
Cincella.
Yeah.
Any objections or comments?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Roll call, please, Judy.
Did you vote? Oh, that's what I'm doing, okay. Mr. Nocesny.
Yes.
Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Mr. Leader.
Yes. Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you all.
Board attorney. How do we think Mike's doing?
We love Mike.
We really do have a long meeting. I would love to nominate Michael Irene as our attorney for 2021.
Second.
Objections, comments?
Mr. Nocesny.
Yeah.
Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway. Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer. Did I hear Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Leader.
Yes. Appointment of the board engineer. Current engineer is Jim Kennedy, Kennedy Consulting. I would like to nominate him as our engineer for 2021.
Second.
Comments?
Mr. Nocesny.
Yeah.
Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Ridgway. Ryan.
Yes.
Ludman.
Yes.
Lauffer.
Yes.
Leader.
Yes. Appointment of the board planner. Open service by hiring rule earmuffs, they do a great job. I'd like to move to appoint them for 2021.
Second.
Comments?
Mr. Nocesny.
Yeah.
Quigley.
Yes.
Ridgway. Ryan.
Yes.
Ludman.
Yes.
Lauffer.
Yes.
Leader.
Yes. The next nomination is the board secretary, and while I would love to move to appoint Judy for the entire year of 2021, she would probably jump off the Zoom immediately. Just so everybody knows, Jen has given notice. We reached out to Judy and asked her whether or not she would be kind enough to assist us during a period of transition. She is going to support us at our meetings and do minutes tonight. If it's necessary, hopefully again in February, we would certainly hope that we can fill the position and have a new secretary to fully replace Jen very, very soon. So at the moment, why don't I make a motion to appoint Ms. Fuller as our secretary for this month? Michael, is that appropriate?
Mr. Chairman, how about acting board secretary?
Yeah, that's what, that's great. Acting board secretary. That would be what I would suggest.
Second.
Um, okay.
Comments, Judy?
Yeah. There are parts of that role that I'm not going to be fulfilling in terms of new applications and everything. It's basically, you know, the meetings and follow-up to meetings and things like that. But, and putting in the legal notices and signing resolutions, so I guess I could call myself an acting board secretary.
Judy's afraid of getting roped in. Judy, everybody's clear on what it is you're doing and there's no misunderstanding what the role of acting secretary means.
Okay.
Can we vote on it?
Sure. Well, I don't know. Has it, has there been a nomination and a?
We had a.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Nocesny.
Yes.
Quigley.
Yes.
Ridgway. Ryan. Ludman.
Yes.
Lauffer.
Yes.
Leader.
Yes. Very, very quickly. We have meeting dates for 2021 that were discussed at an earlier meeting in 2020 and were published as tentative dates. This board now constituted for 2021 needs to now adopt those dates formally. There was an observation by Judy that our meeting on, was it April 1st, Judy?
Yes.
Overlaps with spring break in the schools. Does anybody have any concerns about that?
In the past, I think we've taken the week later. But I don't know if people are concerned about vacations or not.
I mean, it's the first, it's the first of the month, right? If we go to the 8th, I don't think that would be a, I think it would still give us plenty of distance between the April meeting and the May meeting. So I think for safety's sake, maybe we push it to the 8th.
I'm indifferent. Mr. Irene, the fact that we previously published and would be changing the date, that doesn't create any problem, does it? It's only be published after?
No, we're adopting this and we'll go out in the open meetings act going forward.
Does anyone really want a resolution dated April 1st anyway?
That's a good point.
Right. Alright, your point, your point.
I'll make a motion to move it to the, to adjust that date to the 8th. It gives us four weeks between that and the following meeting, so it's not like we're gonna come on top of each other.
So you're moving, you're moving the date subject to that one change?
Yes. Well, I'll make it a motion to approve the calendar subject to the change of the April meeting from the 1st to the 8th.
Second.
Second by Lauffer.
Okay. Mr. Nocesny.
Yeah.
Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, oh yeah, okay. Mr. Ludman.
Yes.
Lauffer.
Yes.
Leader.
Yes. Last but not least, approval of the official newspapers. I assume they're the ones I just read, which are the Two River Times, Star Ledger, and the Asbury Park Press. I'll move that those be our official newspapers.
Second.
Mike, I have a question on that. If, if the council has already adopted those three papers, is there official ones? Do we have to republish on behalf of the zoning board also? Or do we just go with what the council adopted?
Well, if they're the same, why don't we simplify, if I might make this suggestion, Mr. Chairman. We make a motion to adopt as the official publications the same as the boroughs adopted the three that you just announced and leave it at that.
That's my motion.
I'll say.
Okay, Nocesny.
Yes.
Quigley. Ridgway. Ryan. Ludman.
Yes.
Lauffer.
Yes.
Leader.
Yes.
Judy, you'll be, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Judy, you'll be doing the open public meetings act notice for the dates going forward for the new year as well? Thank you. Okay.
Mike, for the, for the purpose of the publications, we have both appointed and awarded contracts tonight, right?
Well, that, no.
No.
What I would suggest is the board has appointed its professionals, subject to their review and approval of the contracts, because this is a, this is a NFO proceeding. There were no prior RFPs. And we'll leave all the other, we'll leave all the other acronyms out. So they've designated their professionals. The professionals will submit the proposed contracts and resolutions for the board's review and adoption next month.
Okay.
Good?
Good.
Great. Moving on to old business, the Gero matter, please.
And, Mr. Chairman, this matter was continued from an earlier meeting of the board without the necessity of renotice. I'm bringing Mr. Guerrero in. Gero. And if there's anybody else, any other professionals associated with the Gero matter, please let me know.
Mike, before we, before we proceed, what's the situation with Mr. Shiovetti, our, our one new member from the hearing in December?
So my, my understanding, and we'll take a minute, and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shiovetti, please certify for me that you were at the entire proceeding. You attended the entire proceeding remotely via the Zoom platform of the Gero hearing before the board in December 2020. You were here for the whole hearing, right?
I was.
Now, you don't have any conflict that would preclude you from sitting on this matter. You don't own property within 200 feet. You don't socialize with the applicant. There's no other circumstances that would preclude you from hearing this matter, correct?
There are not.
A recollection is you did make one comment, but it was in the nature of, for lack of a better word, a generic question about adjacent property. You didn't speak directly in favor or against the application, did you?
I did not.
Okay. So I, I really don't, I can't think of any reason that Mr. Shiovetti shouldn't be able to participate. I don't know that if we conclude tonight, as the alternate number two member, he would be voting anyway.
He won't, right?
Right. So I believe we proceed accordingly, but even if he were to vote, normally we'd have him sign a certification that he reviewed the entire record. In this case, we'd have him sign a certification saying that he was there for the entire proceeding. He certified that for the record. I can swear him in later if need be, if we get to the vote. But I, I believe we're good to go on that, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Mr. and Mrs. Gero, I see you there. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Welcome. We've just walked through procedural detail with regard to Mr. Shiovetti, and I just wanted to present to you the question of whether or not you have any concerns. Mr. Shiovetti has been appointed as an alternate member of the zoning board, and as we have a full board tonight, we would vote the first seven members. The alternates will not vote. Do you have any concern about Mr. Shiovetti's participation in the hearing itself this evening with regard to your matter?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one attendee's got a hand raised. I don't know if it's relating to this matter. Shall we ask what that is about?
It's probably the architect, I assume, right?
Is Ron Grammar your architect?
Yes.
Alright, so let's bring him right into the panelist. I asked that earlier. I didn't hear any reply. Thank you.
And while we're doing that, Mr. Chairman, maybe we'll swear in our professional planner, Ms. Gable. If you'd raise your right hand. You do swear in testimony to this board of a bit of truth, alter, not but truth, self, you got?
I do.
Thank you.
Great. So, Mr. and Mrs. Gero, we were here in December. We went through some plans. We've seen a new submittal. Mr. Irene, do we need anything else with regard to notice?
No, you're, no, Mr. Chairman, the matter was carried without the necessity of further notice. My understanding of the revised plan is that it reduces to some degree the scope of the project.
Good. Well, Mr. and Mrs. Gero, I would invite you to please present to the board the, the basics with regard to your new proposal. Please be sure to specifically address whether it's Mr. Grammar or you, the issues related to the variances, right? So we had a square footage issue. We had a setback issue. Walk us through where you need variances based on your revised plans and then help us understand how you came to, to what you'll be presenting before us tonight.
And before you do that, if you would raise your right hand, Mr. Gero, give us your full name and your address for the record. We're gonna swear you in.
Sean Gero, 8 Henderson Place, Fairhaven, New Jersey.
You do swear in testimony to this board of a bit of truth, alter, not but truth, self, you got?
I do.
And was it Ms. Robbie?
Yes.
Could you give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Laura, L-A-R-A, last name Robbie, R-O-B-B-Y.
Address?
8 Henderson Place, Fairhaven.
And we swear you do swear in testimony to this board of a bit of truth, alter, not but truth, self, you got? Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Grammar? Mr. Grammar? Yeah, you gotta unmute yourself, please? Okay, and if you give us your name and your, your address for the record, please?
Ron Grammar, G-R-A-M-M-E-R, 241 Maple Avenue in Red Bank.
And you do swear in testimony to this board of a bit of truth, alter, not but truth, self, you got?
I do.
Thank you. Alright, we're ready.
Okay. Mr. Grammar, do you want to walk them through the the changes in regards to the, you know, setback, if they are, all that business?
Sure. Is it helpful for me to share screen or does everybody have drawings in front of them that they could see what we've done?
Sharing a screen would be, would be useful. Thank you.
So, Mr. Grammar, is this the revised alterations and additions plans which you prepared that are last revised December 17, 2020?
That is correct.
So I believe we're up to exhibit A dash 3. So we'll mark that as exhibit A dash 3. Thank you very much.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This is the back section of the first floor plan. And I'm just gonna tell you for comparison's sake what the changes were. The, the footprint depth of 15 feet has remained. The footprint width of 26 foot 8 has actually been increased by 8 inches. However, the porch has essentially been integrated into the footprint of the house. If you remember before, I'm gonna switch screens real quickly here if I can. The porch on the previous example is right here where, I don't know if you can see my cursor circling it. It's kind of an appendage off to the side of the house.
Mr. Grammar, I'm gonna ask you, can you set the, your desktop to fit the frames so we can see the whole print? We, we can't see your cursor.
Oh, you want to see the entire? Okay, I'm worried if I back out too far, you're not gonna see too much. You want to see the entire floor plan?
Well, I, I guess I just.
Helpful?
I, I want to see where you're directing us. So if it's, if it's shown on the screen where you want us to look, that's fine. I don't see a cursor.
Can you see my little hand moving here? No? Okay. I'll, I'll have to orient you then just by verbally rather than using the cursor, but this is the old floor plan and it's 26 feet wide by 19 or 15 feet deep. The porch is on the left-hand side. That was the old version. And the mudroom's also on the left side. The new version is this version, which is also 15 feet deep, 26 foot 8 inches wide. So with 8 inches deeper, however, we integrated the porch into the upper left-hand corner, so it's within the rectangle of the rear addition. The mudroom was altered slightly to make that all work with the side porch. The kitchen effectively remains the same. And if you'll remember, the kitchen extends into the existing house. If you see where it says down to existing cellar, there's a dash line above that. That is the back wall of the existing house. So the kitchen on the right side, you'll see the stove near the upper right corner, then the sink below that, the counter extends down into the existing house. And then there's a refrigerator which terminates at the bottom with the pantry below. So from the pantry up until almost the sink is the existing house. There's actually a dishwasher showing right there. So, so keep that in mind because that is the existing house. The new house, really, the new addition we're proposing starts at the island and moves its way backwards. Okay. So I'm gonna show you.
Mr. Grammar, because now we can, at least I can see your little hand.
You see my cursor?
Yeah. So where did you take the, where did you incorporate the porch into the?
The porch is right here on the upper right corner. Before it extended out toward the side on the left side over here.
And did that result in a smaller footprint for that?
Yes. It impacted the lot coverage. Because now I no longer have that appendage off the side, so reduce it ever so slightly, but it did reduce it. The big change, I'm gonna go to the second floor now. The big change is really the second floor. That's where we made all the major adjustments. And I'm gonna try to show you this here now. On the right, on the left side of the screen, this is the, the second floor. Can you see my cursor here? This dash line on the right side in the upper right corner, that, that is the roof of the kitchen below. We've stepped the house in 9 feet 8 inches. Pushed everything in, reduced the master bedroom, if you remember before, and I can go to that other example if you can bear with me here for a second. Here is the original second floor that we showed you last time, which covered the entire second floor. So when it, it, everything, I'm sorry, it covered the entire first floor, aligned with the first floor wall, continued up and around, and then on the left side where my cursor is, that's the roof of the old porch. So that roof. I lost your cursor, Mr. Grammar. I'm not sure if.
Yeah, we're only seeing the, the new version.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, you are. Oh, okay, you guys is not moving as fast as I. Can you see the old version now?
No.
Oh, same, same one.
They might have to be on the same computer screen.
They are on the same computer screen.
Okay, sorry, I don't have a solution then.
Yeah, I'm just switching between different tabs. Okay. Well, I'll try to just describe it to you. If everybody sees the new version, the old version had encompassed the entire first floor footprint. So if you can see my cursor now, I'm circling the roof area of. So if you can see my cursor now, I'm circling the roof area of the set first floor kitchen below. So we're, we're, we've pushed the house in nine feet eight inches, and that's where we're gonna try to make up some of the uh, floor area ratio. Um, moving down in plan, the, the bathroom previously was part of that addition off the back. We've now pushed it down into, it, over the existing portion of the house. We still have the three bedrooms. We still have the two full baths. We still have the laundry. We still have all the closet space. But we've made everything a little bit smaller. So what that does for us in terms of coverage and things like that, um, it reduces everything a little bit. I'll give you the numbers real quickly here if I can.
Mr. Grammar, what's the size of the proposed bedroom? Master bedroom?
The new bedroom is uh, let me zoom in here a little bit, so I can see it. Seventeen feet by fifteen feet.
Thank you.
So previously, I'm gonna give you some of the um, bulk statistics right now. Our front, uh, front yard setback, our rear yard setback, our side yard setback all stay the same. Our total size is all the same. Um, our lot coverage went down from thirty-six point seven percent to thirty-five point four percent. That was due to the covered porch being relocated. Our maximum, maximum habitable floor area ratio went down from point three eight, which was one of the big issues to point three five three. Uh, our habitable area went from twenty-eight, ten to twenty-six, fifteen. So we've taken nearly two hundred square feet out of the house. Our building coverage is down from twenty-two point four to twenty-one point one. Our height remains the same, but that was never an issue, and our stories remain the same, which was also never an issue. So we've reduced our floor area ratio um by just under point three point zero three percent, I'm sorry, and we've reduced our lot coverage by one point three. Uh, and that was all because the area was reduced by almost two hundred square feet.
Mr. Grammar, is all, were you tucked in that master bedroom on the second floor?
Yes.
Did you take some of the bulk out of the back addition of the home? Where we were concerned about that short side yard setback which abutted the neighbors?
So
Property.
Can everybody see my elevations?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So one of the criticisms before was we had this long wall that went along the side yard uh, where we had the setback issue. So by stepping the master bedroom, we no longer have that one long continuous wall of two stories hi- high. It, it steps back at the master. So in the upper right corner would be that elevation that would be on that side yard. So you can see here where my cursor is. Hopefully you can see that. That's where it steps back. This is roof, the dark hatch. So that's the roof. So if you're looking at it from the rear, which is below the lower right corner, you can see this roof here is over the kitchen, slopes up, and then you've got the master bedroom above that.
And was that the shorter
Only one floor now, not two.
Was that the shorter of the two side yards?
Yes, this is the side yard. That's the problem, correct?
That's a good uh
Um, on the front, we, we, we dressed it up a little bit. Last time there was a little there was a comment about how it looks very similar to a lot of the other houses that are being built in the area. And, and, and while it still does at some extent, we tried to dress it up a little bit by playing with the roof lines, adding some board and bat and siding, doing a little gable over the front entrance to draw your attention to, to that front door. Uh, doing what's called an eve return on the gable, so you'd have a little bit of roof, and we did a window above that. So we tried to dress it up a little bit to within reason. Um, the front didn't dramatically change, but I think uh, we articulated and added a few architectural elements to it, just, just to make it look a little bit more uh, a little bit different from the rest of the houses that are nearby.
Mr. Grammar, this may not be a question for you, but uh, last time we raised the possibility of purchasing some land from the adjacent neighbor, being that that was an empty lot. Um, I would ask the Gaiaros if, if that was addressed and what the result of that might have been.
Sure, thank you. Um, I asked our neighbor, uh, Mrs. Williams, and she said she is unwilling to sell any portion of the land and, and has no plans on selling it. As, as long as she's willing, so that, that was a no-go.
Alright, that wasn't a prerequisite to anything we're, we're discussing, but since it was an open issue, I just had to ask it.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, Mr. Grammar, I'd like to make sure that I understand um, exactly what variances are triggered by the application, by the specific design that you're presenting this evening. Um, uh, do you have a zoning table that you can post? While, and while you're looking to do that, the, the, the short side yard, the five-yard side yard, you're extending fifteen feet into that side yard. But the compromise that you struck is you set back the second floor, and that second floor now will comply. So you are partially exacerbating, but you are also trying to accommodate that issue of bulk. Can I describe that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, from a functional standpoint, trying to make that kitchen work by stepping it in, you know, two feet or five feet or whatever we had discussed last time. It, it just wasn't gonna work from a functional standpoint, because if you remember, as I was describing the kitchen, that kitchen extends into part of the existing house. It would create a rea- a weird jog in the kitchen, and, and it just wouldn't allow for you know, the placement of cabinetry and appliances and, and having an eat-in kitchen with an island. And, and the Gaiaros have two children and they have family over particularly during these times now where everybody is, you know, having dinner in family houses rather than going out to restaurants. It's important to them to have that flow and that functionality and, and, and hope that they can get the variance that they need for that, rather than, you know, taking square footage away from the kitchen and making it potentially unusable.
Were you able to accomplish what they needed still with the upstairs uh, additional bedrooms?
Yeah, everything, you know, generally got reduced in size, but the, the, the compromise is really to have living space that the whole family can use, right? They figured the bedrooms is where they sleep, you know, they have their clothes, those types of things, but they could keep you know, the, the family room space, the functional space where the family gathers in the kitchen. Uh, you know, which becomes the heart of most of our homes anymore, particularly the way we're, you know, we function these days. That, that's their hope.
I have a question for the board. Does anybody have the completeness review that I received in the packet of December thirtieth? Looks like the old one. Do we have an updated completeness, uh, uh, updated planning review, I should say? Should reflecting the new numbers, because this one still shows the old twenty-eight January, January four, Elena issued a, uh, another report.
When was it?
January four.
Okay.
January four.
I do have it. Sorry. Thank you.
So let's make sure we get through the zoning table here. Um, we talked about the, the five-yard setback, so that is the um, that's the one setback, but uh, Mr. Grammar, you wanna walk us through what other variances are triggered?
Yeah, okay. So looking at my chart, uh, the first column is what's required, the second column is what's existing, third is proposed. Uh, we're obviously an undersized lot. Um, our frontage is too short, our depth is okay. Our front yard setback has always been deficient, and it remains as it is. The rear yard setback, we're good on. Um, the one side yard setback is where we need the variance. Ten is required, five is existing, five is what we're proposing. Total size were deficient on. It was always sixteen point sixteen, and that's what we're keeping. Um, lot coverage, uh, forty-five percent is allowable. We're coming in at thirty-five point four, so we're okay on that. Floor area ratio, point two eight is what's required, point two one five is what we have. We're proposing point three five three. So another variance is required for that. Maximum habitable area, thirty-two twenty is what's permissible, twenty-six fifteen is what we're proposing. Building coverage thirty-five percent, we're at twenty-one point one. Maximum height thirty-two feet, we're at thirty-one point five. And maximum story is one and a half, and we're perim- proposing two. So the areas we need a variance for are the one yard, the one side yard setback, uh, total sides and maximum habitable floor area ratio.
With regard to the front, um, you're keeping the existing first floor, right?
Correct.
So with regard to the porch, you're dressing it up some. You're not compliant now. You won't be compliant later, but you're not adding anything uh, to the front area. There's no steps that are gonna be added. There's effectively no change in the way the house would um, uh, meet that front yard setback point, right?
We adjusted the roof lines a bit, but nothing, we're not adding area.
So, so the porch that you have is existing, steps that you have may be replaced, but there's no change in grades. There's no additional steps. You're not, you're, are, are you exacerbating laterally?
No.
Well, no, you're going up, right?
Well, yes, we're going up vertically.
Horizontal. So you need a front yard too? Because you're violating the front yard wherever you're um, exacerbating that condition horizontal.
Uh, currently you're at twenty-two two. We're proposing, no, I'm sorry, currently you're twenty-one point five. We're proposing twenty-six point three one to the second floor.
But the requirement's thirty.
Requirement's thirty.
Okay.
Which would, which would almost be impossible to achieve with a second floor unless we did some restructuring of the existing house.
So, so, so the purpose of going through it is to make sure that we don't miss anything.
Right, right.
Board members have question as to why that is, as we talked about that um, at some length in December. But I just wanna make sure we don't miss any of the variances that are triggered by what you're proposing.
The second floor is setback. Um, I think it's setback about five and a half feet from the front first floor facade from the porch, but it's still within that front yard setback, so the variance is required for the front yard setback.
If you remember, we spoke last time about how the, the front property line is much further back from where the curb line even is, or I guess even the sidewalk. Um, as you can see, I don't know if you can see here in my image, this, this line here is the, the property line, but the street is way out here. You know, and, and just graphically, that looks like it's gotta be a good eight to ten feet further past the property line. So not, not that that impacts anything from a, a number standpoint, but from a, a visual standpoint on the street. You're further back than the, the twenty-six feet that our number suggests.
Anything further to help us understand what you proposed?
I don't believe so unless Mr. Gaiaro wants to weigh in.
Um, I think you've pretty much covered it. I, we really uh, took everything that we, we heard from the board members during the last meeting and the, the ones that that really needed to be addressed were the uh, the long two-story span on the right side of the property, uh, which I believe we addressed very nicely by you know, kicking back the uh, second floor addition, uh, fifteen feet from the property line. Uh, I, I think it looks very nice as well. And we took off uh, two hundred square feet and a lot of that came obviously from the upstairs, but there was a comment last meeting about uh, the presence of too many walk-in closets. So we, we did away with those and managed to gain some room there, and you know, as you can see what we did, uh, like how we tucked in the master uh, bathroom and walk-in closet in the existing footprint of the home was a clever idea, and I, I, I think those were the main issues. Uh, and I, I believe we've addressed them.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, to the extent that we commented on the closets, the comments would have related to the efficiency of the space. How you use your space is entirely up to you, but the extent to which you're asking for an exception, the question really is how much of this is necessary in order to establish something that is livable, you know, um, given what you're working with. A- and it's, it's apparent that you listened and worked very hard um, to try to accommodate uh, while maintaining the things that you explained to us that you needed to maintain um, in order to have true usable space, which obviously is in, in everyone's best interest. Uh, Elena, do you have anything um, that the board hasn't touched on with regard to your review of the plans?
Yeah, there was one comment, um, I know. I don't think I included it in my report, but there was discussion about that concrete pad in the rear of the building. Are you still working with the zoning office to try to alleviate the shed or whatever happened back there?
Yeah, well, so I'm in the process of applying uh, for a permit for the shed. Uh, as I mentioned last meeting, the concrete pad is existing. It was there when we purchased the home and I would, I would like to keep it there. I would like to have uh, the shed remain there. Uh, it, I, I believe it does not, I, it, it, it conforms to the, the setbacks uh, in the rear and the left side of the property. Um, you know, where, whereas others uh, on our street have a driveway that extends all the way to the rear of the property and ends at a, a one-car garage. We we're opting, you know, not to apply for that. We'd like to keep it as is and just have the storage shed.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just ask for clarification? There's two separate issues. Am I understanding this correctly? There is a shed, and there is a, an old concrete pad from presumably some old construction, but it's still there? Two separate things, correct?
Correct, but I believe the shed is sitting on the concrete pad.
Right. Yes, that, that is correct.
Do they conform?
Yeah.
Was the only issue that it was constructed without permits?
Um, I, uh, the construction of the shed, yes. The, the concrete pad was existing prior to our purchase.
Right, but if, if all of that conforms, and if you get a permit, then presumably there's no issue. The only issue would be, I guess, to the extent that the concrete pad contributes to lot coverage.
Correct.
So, there's, there's nothing for us to address then, assuming, assuming the board grants relief for the total lot coverage you're asking for in your application as revised.
Correct.
Mr. Cancel, I know that um, we discussed this, and you, you'd raised a comment with regard to the concrete pad. Um, uh, do you have any concerns with regard to it?
Well, I, you know, it, I know it's was existing. I think it was a basketball court at one point or another. That was removed. They placed the shed on top of it. My only concern is, um, you know, if it's just a, a concrete pad, and it sounds like the shed from, and you know, this is going back to uh, our meeting December, um, the shed only takes up a portion of the concrete pad. Is that correct?
Yeah, it takes about, I would say, three quarters of it.
Okay, so three quarters. Alright. My only concern was, you know, as we're expanding out the house, um, you know, we're, we're increasing coverage and then, you know, with uh, another impermeable surface. Um, and if it was an unnecessary impermeable, impermeable surface, I would have a concern, but you know, since the shed is covering three quarters of it, I, I don't think it's a huge issue. If it was a third and the two-third, you know, the concrete was two-thirds, then I think that might be of concern, but the way it's laid out, it, it, it sounds reasonable.
Uh, and Mr. Grammar, can you help us with the lot coverage number? I assume the lot coverage number includes the concrete pad, correct?
Yeah, we're well under for lot coverage. We're at, uh, let's see here. Thirty-eight, I'm sorry, thirty-five point four.
And what's the maximum?
Forty-five.
And that's calculated to assume the, the construction of the addition, correct?
Yes, correct.
Got it. Okay, anything further from the board before we open to the public? No, Mr. Grammar, if you could unshare your screen, please? Uh, Mr. Mulay, if you could um, keep your eye out, um, right now, we're gonna open to the public. If any uh, members of the public have any questions or comments uh, with regard to the applicant, uh, application, um, please use the raise hand feature to let us know, and we'll bring you forward. Um, and you can ask those questions.
See none at the moment.
Give it a few more seconds. All clear?
All clear.
Okay. Um, anything further in closing before the board deliberates?
No, I, I think, I think we're good.
Good. Okay, uh, let's deliberate.
I'll start. Um, you know, looking at the, the far is obviously, there's two, two, two things I see here. You know, looking at the, the far is obviously, there's two, two, two things I see here that obviously we've been talking about, the far and the side yard with respect to the far, um, you know, had this been a conforming lot, we're at twenty-six point one, well within the twenty-eight percent. I maintain my position that I said in the last meeting about the lot, all these lots on Hendrickson are, you know, there, there are fives in an R-ten zone and, and it is what it is, but we, we run into this issue all the time. The five-foot setback on that side obviously is a problem. I think they've done a really nice job reconfiguring that second floor to mitigate it. We still have a problem with the first floor, but remember, it's a vacant lot on that side of the, of the yard. And it's not like you have another house existing with driveway and houses there and you're gonna be up in the, in somebody's face. Should that lot ever be developed, I would imagine that whoever puts one house on that lot and a half, essentially what it is, will put something there that, that, that will, you know, uh, won't, won't make that a problem. They'll say, okay, this is where, where we're gonna site the house on. Um, I, I think they've done a nice job with that second floor, I was actually impressed that, that they were able to figure out something to do with that master bedroom and not make it really tiny, so. That's what I think. And I hate doing lots on Hendrickson because of this, this reason.
Uh, I think the, uh, the Gero's have done a nice job kind of coming back and readdressing some of our issues. I think the plan as proposed is not out of size or character, uh, with the other homes on the street. And I think the changes, uh, will be a positive addition to the neighborhood.
I think the extent, to the extent that empty lot next door came up oddly at the last meeting, the fact that the neighbor is not willing to sell the property, I believe, uh, supports, uh, finding of hardship because they're not able to expand their lot to, um, to accommodate the side yard setback. So that wouldn't be held against them. And also, they did a good job, uh, pulling in the second floor master. So they're actually getting their extra room, but they're decreasing the exacerbation of the side yard setback violation. That was in the first plan, and I thought it was a really good, really inventive way of, of addressing the, that issue.
Thank you.
I would agree with Dr. Love. Mr. McChesney as well, I think this is a good example of, um, collaboration of an effort. Um, really like your plans, um, really like the way the the home, I think if I recall, the, the signs, uh, last time, you know, very much of a block. Um, so a lot of more interesting, uh, cuts, uh, roof angles.
Mm-hmm.
I think it'll be a very nice addition to the neighborhood. I would agree with, um, you know, Pat, um, you know, with that vacant lot not being, uh, it will be bought or purchased, that was a avenue that was pursued, which is good to know. Um, and, um, yeah, I think it's a very nice plan, uh, really, really, well done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I echo my fellow board members sentiments, I thought the Gero's and, uh, Mr. Graham did a great job of taking some of the comments to heart and it's, uh, very nice project. Uh, I'll be driving past this, uh, remodeled house every day and it'll definitely add to the character of the neighborhood.
If, if the board sees fit to grant the relief, if the board has fit to grant the relief, and I, and I certainly do not question Mr. Gero's words, but do you want a, a condition requiring written confirmation from the neighbor that, uh, she was requested and declined to, um, uh, sell any of her property? We can address that as we discuss a resolution. Very good, thank, thank you. I, I think, I, I, I echo everyone's sentiments, I think you did an excellent job hearing us, um, adjusting the plans, I think it's a lot better. Um, there's still a compromise for us to address, but your hardship is, um, based on the existing structure uh, that you have, and, uh, finding an efficient way to reuse that and adjust it um, is something that you need to work with and that we certainly can recognize, um, uh, as a hardship that we have to work around. And I think you struck the right balance here, and I want to thank you, um, for taking the effort to do that, this is, it's never pleasant to have to do it again. Um, but I think you really did hit it, and I think that, um, this is gonna feel better on that property boundary as a result of what you've done. Anyone else, uh, either have a comment or want to make a motion?
I both, actually, I just, uh, and something that you brought up, Mr. Leader, which, which is just an aside, um, I do want to congratulate them on, on, and again, maintaining existing property and making it work for you rather than tearing it down and building a new one, which could probably conform to the setbacks, but look just like every other new building town and, and I, I think that's very important for us to remember. Um, on that note, I will make a motion to approve the plan as submitted or the revised plan as submitted.
Peter, I, I'm gonna second your motion and I'm gonna, um, suggest that we not require, uh, that they get a letter from the neighbor confirming the property is unavailable, I'll take them at their word.
Yeah, agreed, that's pretty much.
Any discussion on the motion? Any other conditions? We didn't really talk about materials, we didn't really talk about trees. Um, I can't think of anything that we need to get in here, does anybody remember anything that we had talked about in December that we needed to talk about here? Other than the, the customary general conditions and the specific condition would be to, uh, conform or satisfy any of the, uh, requirements or recommendations set forth in the board planners review letter? Yeah, Peter, you gonna read the thing or you just gonna go with that little one?
I'm going with that, that, I'm short and sweet, the new year, I don't, I don't have the thing in front of me unfortunately. Mr. Bull, they never provided me with that some years ago.
Uh, alright, so I, I actually, I actually have it, Peter, so as condition of my second, I will add in that language, which is that the decision of war would be based on the accuracy of the record made by the applicants and presentation to the board, as well as all drawings, rendering, surveys and site plans that were referred to during the hearing, and then the within approval will be conditioned on substantial compliance of the force adopted statements. Roll call please, Judy.
Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Miss Quigley?
Yes.
Ridgeway? Ridgeway?
Give me your data, Joe.
Alright, oh, yes?
Yeah. Ryan?
Yes.
Ludman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Leader?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Guerra and Ms. Robbie.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Grammar.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, our next matter on the agenda tonight is the Anderson matter. Mr. Chairman, my notes reflect that this matter was carried from the December meeting of the board without the necessity of renotice. And I understand it's Mr. Akins' matter and I believe he is in attendance, so we'll let him put his appearance on the record. Joe, are you moving them? You're muted, Joe. While we're doing that, we're gonna swear in Ms. Gable, our professional planner, if you'd raise your right hand, you just swearing testimony to this board to be the truth, alter the number, true stuff you got.
I do.
Thank you.
Can the other attendees associated with Anderson raise your hand so I can move you over? Thank you.
Mr. Akins, do we have you?
Does he, you want him in? Okay, hang on. He didn't raise his hand, so I didn't move him. Here he goes. They just gotta unmute themselves and they should be live. And I'm moving Jason Fletcher over as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, greetings, Mr. Akins and your team.
Greetings, uh. Can someone activate my, uh, my video? It was on for the hearing that I was just on in Bradley Beach.
Were they able to, uh, activate your video?
Yep, let's see if this, uh, there we go, okay, that's better. Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone, happy new year, uh, I hope it's a healthy and happy one for everyone. Um, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, and we can see.
Terrific, great. Um, well, my apologies for having to see me. Um, so this is an application, ladies and gentlemen, for, um, renovations, uh, to an existing, uh, single-family residence at eighty-one River Lawn Drive, and before I proceed, um, I would just ask, um, Council Irene, if he could please confirm that, um, my notice and jurisdictional package is in order. Mr. Akins, I indicated a minute ago, I'm not sure if you were into the session yet. I was not. That my notes reflect that we, um, carried the matter from the December meeting of the board to tonight's meeting without the necessitive renotice. Thank you very much for the clarification, Mr. Irene, appreciate that. So, um, a- a- again, uh, this is a riverfront property, the house dates to the nineteen twenties. It has had a series of various additions, and the proposal before you this evening requests side yard variances to, uh, each side, the west and the, uh, east, uh, relatively modest, well, to, in comparison to the existing, uh, side yards, uh, that will reconcile these prior, uh, older historic additions and improve the floor plan. And, uh, to sustain our burden of proof, uh, with us this evening, we have, uh, James Anderson, our architect. We have Stephen Krog, our landscape architect, and Jason Fichter, who will give expert planning testimony as a licensed professional planner. Um, many of you have heard Mr. Fichter's testimony previously may recall, he's also a licensed engineer, but I do not believe that there are any engineering issues that affect this application. Uh, so with that, if we could have, um, the witnesses sworn, please? I'm, I will do that, Mr. Akins, so that we don't, uh, forget to do so, but I'm gonna suggest to the chairman, after we do that, Mr. Chairman, I believe there were a couple, uh, completeness waivers that we needed to address in, um, Ms. Gable's, uh, review letter. But I will swear in, uh, the witnesses and then we can, we can proceed to do that. Uh, James Anderson, if you'd raise your right hand, you just swearing testimony to this board to be the truth, alter the number, true stuff you got?
I do.
Give us, give us your full names, spell your last and your address for the record, please.
James Christian Anderson. And, uh, our address here is one-twenty East River Road, Rumson, New Jersey.
And it's A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, Mr. Krog? You do swear in testimony to this board to be the truth, alter the number, true stuff you got? Uh, you're muted, sir. You're still muted, there you go.
I do.
And if you give us your full name, spell your last and the address for the record, please.
Stephen Krog, K-R-O-G, nineteen Harris Park, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, you do swear in testimony to this board to be the truth, alter the number, true stuff you got?
I do, Jason Fichter, F-I-C-H-T-E-R, Inside Engineering, nineteen fifty-five Route thirty-four and Wall.
Mr. Akins, anybody else you want us to swear in before we move to the completeness items? Uh, thank you, Mr. Irene, I was gonna say that the applicants, uh, Andrew and Christie Anderson are also with us this, this evening. I don't have them as part of my formal presentation, but to the extent that the board has any particular questions concerning their ownership of the property, they're available, so yes, please, if you could swear them, I'd be most appreciative. Mr. Anderson, you wanna unmute, oh, you did, unmute yourself, okay, if you'd raise your right hand, sir? You do swear in testimony to this board to be the truth, alter the number, true stuff you got?
I do.
Give us your full names, spell your last, your address for the record.
It's Andrew Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, our address is one-oh-four Linden Drive in Fairhaven, New Jersey.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, if you raise your right hand, you do swear in testimony to this board to be the truth, alter the number, true stuff you got? You do?
Yeah.
Okay, and if you'd give us your full names, spell your last and your address for the record, please.
It's Christie Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, and our current address is one-oh-four Linden Drive in Fairhaven.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's another Mr. Pazola on, I don't know if they're associated with this application, and if they are, if you want to swear them or if they're involved.
Is that, is that a witness, uh, for you, Mr. Akins? It is not. Okay, so it may just be an instant party, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll move them to, uh, the, uh, attendee list for the moment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullay.
Uh, Mr. Akins, so let, let's address the waivers, and then before you get into your testimony, I would ask that you please outline for the board the specific variances that are required plans you're proposing, and I would also ask you please to address the issue with regard to the, um, uh, to the description of the lot, the engineering issue that we went through at the end of last year, so you can help us understand what the analysis was, what the end result was, and then sort of true that up, please, with your, uh, explanation of the variances.
Absolutely.
You want me to go through the completeness waivers?
Please, thank you.
Okay, sure, so, uh, we granted a waiver for the, uh, Monmouth County Planning Board application, since this property does not front on a county road. So granted the waiver for Freehold Soil Conservation District, as the applicant indicated, this item is not applicable. Um, we granted a waiver for the Monmouth County Health Department, um, and then also copies of all easements, covenants and deed restrictions. We recommended that the applicant provide testimony to address this item tonight during the hearing. Um, and then the zoning officer had requested to provide any details of proposed work to the detached garage. And so we indicated the applicant shall address this item tonight at the zoning board hearing.
So, other than the items that the applicant is going to address during the proceedings, those, those other items that preceded that, that Ms. Gable has recommended or takes no exception to the board granting completeness waivers, does somebody want to make a motion to grant those waivers so we can proceed to the merits?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I? On, we do an all-favor form roll call. We'll, we'll do a roll call, but, but who, who, who is second?
Chad.
Oh, Mr. Natcha, Mr. Natchasney, Judy.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if you just want to call the roll on the waivers, please?
Sure. Uh, Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Go ahead, Mr. Akins.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, you had asked me to identify the variances that are requested. Those variances are a nine-point-six-foot, uh, variance on the Westerly side yard. That is for the, uh, new porch and roof, and that, um, meets the existing side yard setback on that west side of nine-point-six. So that is not an exacerbation of that, um, existing nine-point-six foot, but it is a, a portion of the structure which will be new construction. On the Easterly side yard, uh, there is a nine-point-five, uh, foot setback that's proposed to the new covered entry. Um, and when you add them together, it's approximately nineteen, uh, excuse me, it's approximately twenty-point-one, twenty-point-two feet for the combined side yard. Those are the only new variances.
The only new variances, you, you mean the only variances?
Those are the new variances, would you like me to discuss the existing non-conformities?
No, I'm sorry, you're creating two new variances by the application tonight, you don't mean new based on prior plans, you just mean those are the only variances?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so two second.
Akins, could you check the combine, total combined side yard? I think, I think Ms. Gable had called it out as sixteen-point-six. Uh, I've got nine-point, nine-point-five and nine-point-six, which I think gets us to nineteen-point-one. She has nine-point-five and seven-point-one, unless there was a change? Uh, I don't think the plan shows seven-point-one.
No, I submitted a revised planning review on December first, is that the one you're looking at, Mr. Irene?
I'm sorry, I may, I may be looking at the old one. I apologize, I go with Mr. Akins' numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Akins, so, so the, the lot coverage issue a- and the, and how we calculated the lot, I thought that you had square footage that was pushing right up against it, I thought as the, as the end result of the engineering, we wound up with something less, did you adjust the plans after that, or?
So the plans have been, the plans have been adjusted to reflect the lot size at twenty-four thousand thirty-five square feet per the, uh, board engineer's, uh, requirement. There had been some, uh, determination based upon the, uh, zoning officer's calculation of a lot area, uh, prior to, um, the filing of this application to the mean, um, high water line, the bulkhead line, however, um, that, that, excuse me, to the, uh, the former mean high water line, but now we're at the bulkhead line and therefore we're at twenty-four thousand thirty-five square feet, and all of the metrics are based on that, uh, including in particular the zoning table that's set forth in Mr. Krog's plans, it, it reflects again, existing square footage of a lot at twenty-four thousand thirty-five square feet, where thirty thousand square feet is the requirement in the R-thirty zone.
So you comply with the cap and you comply with floor ratio as proposed?
Uh, we could, we comply with those figures, correct? No, not with the ratio.
No.
Well, we're reducing, uh, let me say this, we're reducing. We're reducing the ratio, um, from 4,152 square feet that exists presently to 4,124 square feet. Based upon the lot size of 24,035. So that's a reduction.
So you're saying that you don't need a variance because you already have it. You're effectively taking away from the existing structure. Uh, is that, is that the reason you're saying you don't need a variance for it?
That, that's correct. I noticed it in the list of the several, um, nonconforming conditions, Mr. Chairman. But it's actually a reduction of 28 square feet from the present, from the present condition, which is permitted.
What's permitted?
4,152 square feet where 4,124 square feet is proposed.
But 252 is over the ratio though.
It is.
But just so I'm clear, Mr. Akins, when you say it's permitted, was there a variance or is it preexisting nonconforming?
No, we take, we take the position that it's preexisting nonconforming.
Okay, but so we're not looking for a resolution or anything to demonstrate any of this relief was great. It's preexisting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I need to be sure I understand the end result. Uh, do you exceed the cap based on the requirement in the zone as proposed?
No.
Wha- what is the cap in this zone, Mr. Fisher?
15%.
If the, that's, that's the ratio. Uh, uh, according to Ms. Gables, according to Ms. Gables' review letter, you're allowed 5,180 square feet. Habitable floor area. The existing is 4,152 square feet and the proposal is a reduction to 4,124 square feet. So according to the review letter, it conforms on the cap. It exceeds the floor ratio, although there's a slight reduction proposed in that.
What's the cap, what's the cap in this zone?
The review letter says 5,180 square feet. Is that not accurate?
I, I'm asking.
I'm asking Ms. Gable. I don't know.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, it's 5,180 square feet for this zone.
All right, so the existing house is south of that and the proposed house is 25, 26 feet south of that. What is, what is the floor ratio that's required in the zone?
Point 1.5.
And what is the proposal?
Point 1.7.
And the existing?
Point 1.7.
Okay, so we are over on floor ratio, but the position of counsel is that you don't need a variance for it. It's a preexisting condition.
Yes, we're technically a point 1.72 now and reducing to point 1.71. Very small reduction at 28 square feet. But a reduction.
I, I'm gonna suggest particularly since you have all these professionals and I'm sure that we're spending a lot of time and energy and money on this. That we leave the issue open as to whether or not the board feels as though it's necessary to address in any resolution a decision with regard to floor ratio. If you're modifying the house, then you're, you're obviously capable of conforming and bringing it down. I, I understand the argument and we can just leave it there for the moment.
And Mr. Fichter will address that in his planning testimony.
Great. All right, Mr. Akins, we got through it.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, the applicant would call James Anderson with regard to architectural testimony. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you recognize, uh, Mr. Anderson's qualifications?
Yeah, we don't need to qualify Mr. Anderson again. We've qualified him very many times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening.
I'm wondering if you could take a moment, orient the board to, uh, this, uh, lovely waterfront property in the borough as well as the existing residents. And then also discuss what's proposed with regard to the architectural plans that have been submitted by your firm.
I'd be happy to do so. Can I go ahead and share my screen with the board?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Okay. The application for 81 River Lawn this evening is a second phase of this property with the current owners. And intended to be the final phase. Uh, it's really intended to make a better composed house, a more attractive one. And better functioning rather than to demolish the structure and create a new, um, house there. The original house, uh, when they, uh, when it was made, I believe it's mentioned back in the twenties. Uh, but it has been substantially added on to, uh, over time. Uh, and a lot of that original detail stripped and taken away so that uh, original simplicity and kind of quaintness of the house is really long gone. When, here's three pictures of the, uh, uh, house when the Andersons purchased it. This is a picture from the Easterly side. Uh, this, the Northeastly side, you can see some of the original house here to the west of that. Uh, and there've been substantial additions here, uh, to the east side. Uh, and you can see a lot of the, the detail has been stripped off the house. And, and it's really been done, I would call it piecemeal. Uh, but without creating, um, sort of an overall composition. It's just been added on to, added on to, and added on to over a period of years. This picture is a picture from the water side. Uh, and you can see the original portion of the house. Then all the details been stripped off of it. The, the porch was enclosed in the back. Uh, additions were made to the, uh, west. Uh, and then, uh, again, uh, here's the additions to the east, uh, which we just took a look at the other photograph of. And finally, uh, a picture, uh, from the front. And again, the detail stripped off of it, uh, and a number of additions here. And I would call this one like the, the tail wagging the dog, uh, where the, some of these jutted out in front. Really took away that sort of, um, composition of the original house and a garage very present and really kind of obscured, uh, the house.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, if I may, uh, Mr. Irene, we're showing pictures, I believe pictures were included in the application. I just want to make sure you're comfortable uh, with the marking of exhibits.
Yeah, first thing I was gonna ask, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Chairman, did, did you take photographs, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, one of my staff did.
Okay, do you know when they were taken?
Oh, gosh, uh, it could have been about a year and a half ago.
You've been out to the property?
Yes, I have.
Do the photographs fairly depict the condition of the property as it currently exists?
No, those, that's the, the, the state of the property when the owners purchased it.
Oh, so it's, it's been changed since then?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. When did the, when did the owners purchase it? A year and a half ago?
Uh, I would ask them, it's probably closer to two years ago.
Okay, so the photographs that you just referred to don't depict the property in its current condition. They depict the property the way it existed when the owners purchased the property approximately two years ago.
Yes.
And you're gonna show us other photographs that depict the property in its current condition?
Uh, I have drawings that show that and I have it, uh, with the new proposed, so I can toggle back and forth and it will be crystal clear what is being proposed and what's existing. Uh, uh, but before I show you that, I wanted to show you, uh, several rendered elevations.
All right, Mr. Anderson, so hold on one second. So we have three photographs that will mark as exhibits A dash one through and including A dash three that depict the house the way it existed two years ago. Approximately when the applicants bought the property, but not the way it exists today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, A1 through and including A3.
Thank you. What is being proposed this evening is to, um, create a, uh, bring back that integrity particularly to the main part of the house, uh, which is the center section of the house. Uh, and then to take the, uh, side portions of it and to bring those in to uh, to subordinate those somewhat and to make them uniform and complimentary so that there's more of a, an overall uh, discernible composition and character to it. Uh, and also adding trims and so forth in that, uh, original colonial revival style. This is a view from the western side. Uh, and one of the things that's being proposed i- is we're going to be, uh, modifying some of the square footage. We're gonna take away some of the square footage of the, the enclosed porch and then to add that over the garage over here. And on, this is a photograph from the eastern side, again, showing that, uh, the porch being opened up again. Uh, and then there's some of the space being added over the garage. And then some being added here on the southern floor of the appendage. To the east, to make it uniform with the opposite side. And finally, the front of the house. What's being requested, as Mr. Akins mentioned, uh, the porch being added or extended to the walls to make it uniform across the front of the house. And then some space being added over the garage to get it really uniform. A gable that matches, uh, the front of the house. So really what's, you can get a sense of the overall intention here is to bring back some of that, uh, early, uh, colonial revival, uh, character and clarity to the house.
Mr. Anderson, what we're gonna mark is A dash four through and including A dash seven, four renderings of the proposed elevations of the, uh, new house as you've prepared them?
Please.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could I ask real quick? You said that the photographs depict the house as it was a year and a half ago, but not as it is now. What has changed?
Uh, it, it's, uh, gone through renovations. Uh, and I, I can show you in these drawings that, um, um, I have here what, what, what the house looks like now. Uh, and, and what is being proposed. So, uh, in fact, if you can take a look at the screen now. Um, this shows the current status of the house. And what is being requested, uh, now is to add on to the left side of the front to create a, a porch that will balance it out. And as I mentioned, uh, before, the enclosed porch in the back would be opened again to be an open porch. Uh, and then there is a, um, uh, a, a breakfast nook that would be moved, uh, a little bit to the east.
Is, is there a reason that photographs were submitted of the condition of the dwelling two years ago? But you don't have any of the condition of the dwelling currently?
The, the reason why I had the original ones was to show what the overall intent of what the, uh, clients are intending to do to bring back that, um, overall colonial revival composition and balance. I think it will become more clear when I show the elevations of it. I, I just don't have current ones now. And, and by the way, it's, it's, it's being renovated now. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's, I don't know if any of you have had the chance to go visit the site. Uh, but that's, uh, it's, it's been renovated as we speak. But, uh, again, here, I don't know if you can see this as I toggle back and forth what is being proposed on the first floor. Again, the, uh, enclosed porch is being, uh, removed and it will, some of that space will be displaced over the garage. The, the front porch going across the front and then this bay window being centered more on the kitchen.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Uh, for the purpose of making sure that the board members are comfortable with what's going on. It's my understanding that there's substantial renovations going on at the site right now. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna gather that the current plan is to finish the house as it sits without triggering any new variances. And that you have held off on renovations to things that require variances. And you're kind of in limbo waiting for the board to opine with regard to the proposal. But that you are prepared to move forward with a plan B, which would be to complete what you've already started without any new variances. Is that correct?
That's a fair summary. That's correct. So we've got a permit. We're constructing pursuant to that permit. We have some, uh, tweaks that are proposed to that. Those tweaks necessitate the variances that I described earlier this evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. And we're prepared to give testimony for the board's consideration because we think that what is proposed is a better alternative than that which is currently under construction pursuant to the permit.
Do any board members have any questions about the status of affairs so that we can put this issue to the side and focus on the proposal?
All right, we're good. Thank you for the clarification on that. What is, now I have the, uh, existing second floor, uh, plan here on the screen. And what is being proposed here again is to extend, um, the porch to balance out the front of the building. To add over the garage. And then to add or to put into alignment the, the two, let's call them wings or the appendages on either side of the main block of the building. Right now they're out, i- i- it's a stepped and a non-aligned configuration. And the intent here is to, uh, uh, cal- kind of calm the structure down and bring it more into harmony. And let that, uh, central block again be the, the, the primary, uh, guide. Uh, or the, the primary ordering device. And here you can see how it now it's all, the two sides are in alignment on the water side. Uh, and here the, the porch has been extended over the front, so there's a uniform porch. And then the space over the garage.
And Jay, it, it actually looks like you're, you're sort of taking us to where the house is right now because about a minute ago, you were showing us the front without that porch piece on the the front left part of it. Right there. Go back, right. Now that's, take it away again. That's what the house is like now.
No, it's like this.
Yeah, so that, if the board wants to know what it's like now. It's the one before. It's that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the one that's, if you look at the bottom of the plan, uh, Ms. Quigley, you see the word existing in the center bottom of the plan. Now Jay, toggle to the, uh, proposed. Now if you, if you look at the bottom in that same place, you see the word proposed. So proposed is what we're proposing tonight and ex- existing is what is under construction by permit presently.
So the existing sort of, the part that says existing, I was just trying to further clarify what we were talking about before. That is sort of the missing link between Jay's first pictures of the house and the current, the current, um, stat.
That, that, that's correct.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you for my clarity. So going to the proposed, we're triggering exacerbations of side yards then? Is that, is that what's the concept of it?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Can you show me an existing, do you have that same toggle for the first floor? Or I'd like to see that.
I do. And I'm sorry, because we, we just, we did the first floor right before and I should have, um.
That's, that's helpful.
Jay, Jay, can you please use your, your cursor, your hand to walk the board through the changes on the first floor?
Well, absolutely. This is, as, as, uh, Mr. Akins, uh, pointed out, this is the existing. And what's being proposed here is to add, uh, a porch that's, that's out here that would create a uniform front here. On, on the water side, we're proposing taking away this habitable space which will be displaced over the garage. Um, and then this bay window being more centered on this space over here. And if you don't mind, I can toggle back and forth not to get anybody sick, but.
Well, I just think we should probably mark the existing and then the proposed for the first floor and then the second. So that.
What I, what I, what I was going to suggest, Ms. Quigley, is assuming, Mr. Anderson, these are all in part of the set of floor plans and exhibit you submitted in conjunction with the application. I was gonna mark that in its entirety. Are these all part of that?
Uh, these are. Uh, these are extracted from that.
Okay, so, so we are going to mark as exhibit A dash eight. The floor plans and elevations prepared by James C. Anderson, AIA, consisting of, how many sheets do we have here, Mr. Anderson?
There, there would be six.
Six sheets?
Two, two floor plans and four elevations.
Six sheets and they were dated. May 14, 2020, last revised October, excuse me, November 18, 2020? Is that correct?
The, these particular exhibits are not dated.
But are, but are they part of the plans that we have? You pulled them off the plans we have? Are they different?
No, no, they, they, the, the proposed is the same. That's what was submitted.
With one variation and, and I don't want to get ahead of Jay Anderson, but I want to share with the board. That a neighbor, and that is the, the, the Moniker Trust, the neighbor to the west. It was represented by counsel, Mr. Gazarovski. Mr. Gazarovski and I have been speaking the last several months to address the concern that he had that the proposed new porch. Was too close to the side yard of the Moniker Trust. And as a result of that, we have cut back that porch. And Mr. Anderson's testimony and further revised drawings will show that. So again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. But I want to let the board know and, and Mr. Irene is aware of this, I believe, because I've included him in the correspondence. That Mr. Gazarovski and I have come to an arrangement and there are revised plans that reflect that. And Mr. Anderson is going to get us there momentarily.
Thank you. Mr. Akin, excuse me, it would, it would be very helpful if we knew where the property line was in relation to that proposed porch extension.
Yeah, and, and when, and, and doctor, when we get to Mr. Krog's plan, the site plan, we're, you're going to see it in, in, in multi colors.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So, so Mr. Akins, let me suggest that we're going to mark the floor plans and elevations that were submitted in conjunction with the application. Prepared by Mr. Anderson, six sheets, May 14, 2020, last revised November 18, 2020, as exhibit A dash eight. And then, Mr. Anderson, you can tell us which of these are different and we'll mark them accordingly so we know. So we'll have some kind of record of what the plans are that are at issue before the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, again, I, I don't want to get ahead of myself because I was going to address that. Stepping in of the porch after I went through this. This is really what was brought in, in November. So I would be happy to go through the floor plans again, or I can show you in the elevations what is being proposed as well.
Why don't we stay on the floor plans, just so the board is satisfied that they understand the comparison as Ms. Quigley. Has indicated the so-called missing link and what we're, what we're proposing this evening.
Okay, I, let me go through that again. The, the front, the porch being added here to the southwest is part of it. The, the reconfiguration of the. Breakfast bump here is part of it and then taking away of the enclosed porch. So enclosed porch and actually the, the study is being taken away in that corner as well. And again, that's trying to make this a more uniform presentation and, and when I can show you the elevations, it will become more clear what I'm talking about.
Okay, uh, Mr. Irene, may I just poll the board to see if they're satisfied on the comparison on the first floor?
As long, as long as the chairman's okay with it, I'm okay with it. He's the boss, Mr. Akins.
Mr. Chairman, may I poll the board?
I, I, I think we've seen the differences. We've seen where space is being added, where space is being removed. Is anybody have any questions about the way the first floor is changing?
Now we're good. Let's go. Let's move up to the second floor, Mr. Anderson.
Happily.
Same approach, please.
But we did that already.
We just want to make sure that we understand that.
But this isn't, is this the final, Mr. Akins, is the final one or is there another revision after this due to Mr. Gazarovski's complaint?
There, there, there's going to be a subcomponent of the front porch.
Okay, so it's just the front porch.
A takeoff of the front porch. That's the only thing that changes pursuant to Mr. Gazarovski's request.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and again, just to reiterate, the second floor, it's again extending the porch along the front to give a uniform. Presentation along the, the front elevation. It would be the, making us a 12 on 12 roof pitch and adding space over the garage. And then it would be, if you can see over here, there's an existing wall on the left-hand side. It would be building the reciprocal alignment on the easterly side to align with that. And you, here, I'll go ahead and toggle back. So here you can see now these two walls are in alignment on either side of this. Main block of the original building. Here's the porch being filled in. And here's the space over the garage. I'm going to go ahead and toggle back and forth. So hopefully that will kind of clarify. That in, in plan form.
Mr. Anderson, just for clarification, the area that we're referring to as the front porch, this is not habitable space, correct?
That's correct. It's covered outdoor space. It's a porch.
And that's true all the way over to the garage. That entire area in front of the front door is all porch.
That's not true. On the, it's existing. Can I go back to the first floor and show you?
Yeah, whatever. It's good. Sure.
Yeah. So this is space that would be under that porch roof that's existing. And then. So it's, it's filling in that, but there was already space over here.
I just want to point out that as you click between the two, it became apparent that you're pushing that wall forward as well.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. That's true. That's absolutely true. Can you see that right, right here?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
So when you go to the second floor.
Yes.
So I'm seeing the stairway and the bathroom immediately behind the front door. There's no habitable space on the second floor in the area that is the mudroom and the porch on the first floor.
Correct. It's a, it's a flat roof. No, no habitable space on the second floor. But that was a good point on the first floor. We, we'd actually gone through some iterations there, but. You can see how this little sliver is filled in. And it's a long, it's not worth the explanation of that, but that, that's absolutely correct. And if it's, I'd be happy to come, go through this or I, I can circle back to it. But why don't I show you the elevations?
So is everybody, so, so with.
This is the existing back of the house. And what you cannot see is that these two walls are not in alignment. They look like they are, but they're not. We want to build out this one to be in alignment with the one on the west side. Eliminate the space over here and then center this bay on the other side and then take out this. Of the enclosed porch. And again, now, these are two clean vertical walls here. That have been somewhat subordinated so that original part of the house now can really be the focal point of the house. And these two are meant to sort of calm down and be supportive of that main section. Rather than it's kind of a hodgepodge of roofs and so forth currently right now. And these two planes are, two wings are in different planes. And what we're proposing to do is put them in the same plane, clean them up so the vertical walls and there's sort of a uniform. Presentation on, on either side of the main block facing the river.
Uh, Jay, may I intervene for a quick second? I think it may help the board now if we can go. With the plan view from Stephen Krog's plan SP one, just for informational purposes. I think now would be a good time for the board to see how, what you've described on your elevations and your floor plans. Fits in and then we'll come back to how we resolve things with the neighbor on the west. Can you please dial up SP one? And can you, can you enlarge the area of the house relative to the side yards that we've been discussing, please? Little bit more? One more? There we go. And scroll up? And scroll to the left? Perfect. Okay, great. And scroll up just a little bit more. Okay, great. Okay, so now we're looking at Mr. Krog's plan. And this was last revised, I think through November 18th, 2020, Mr. Irene. It's identified as SP one?
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
You want to mark it now, subject to Mr. Kraga identifying when we bring him up?
Yes, please. That's A nine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Anderson, tell us what we're looking at. Obviously, this is a plan view, but the bottom. Of the structure is the front of the house, correct?
That's correct. The street is.
Okay, now, now from this plan view, tell the board what is the, the, the new changes that are proposed. And I use the word proposed to correspond with the word proposed on your plans that we just reviewed, first and second floor.
Okay, um, so I'm going to start on the water side over here. This is a. An inclu- currently an enclosed porch that goes all the way over here. We're, we're looking to. Open the porch and, and demolish this section of, of structure over here. We're looking to add a pergola here, which is intended to. Balance off that breakfast bump that I was mentioning over on the east side. Where here it's enclosed space, here it's just a, a pergola, a bracketed pergola to give balance and to the composition.
So that former study at the northwest corner of the house is going to be removed. And what's going to take its place is a permitted patio.
That's correct.
Right, okay, but the pergola there depicted in purple, a portion of the pergola. Extends into the side yard there, but doesn't exacerbate the already non-conforming 9.5 feet at the front of the house.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, please, please continue. So far, so good.
Okay. The, on the front of the, the building, there is a, a part of the application is to fill in this section of porch. Over here to give a uniform porch-like. Appearance to the front. This would be open space, really just covered porch. But as the chairman pointed out, this section would be filled in over here, but what we're doing is. All this is being tucked under the porch-like thing. So it looks like part of the porch was enclosed. But it's really to give a uniform porch-like appearance to the, the front of the house.
And that's open, that purple area on the diagonal, that's all open, correct?
That's correct.
So it's, it's not habitable?
Correct.
Okay, now let's move on to the east side of the house if we could, please.
Okay.
Now we're at the front of the garage, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and what's happening there?
A, a bracketed pergola is, is being proposed. Matching that in the back and that's, you know, primarily it did really just aesthetic to give it scale and appeal on the front of the garage.
Okay, and now let's move a little bit farther north on the east side of the house. What's that small purple rectangle?
Um, that's a, a covered side entry and, and I believe there was one approved before. But this is moved to the north from what was approved before. And you'll, you'll, I can go back to the floor plans and the reason why it is being. Proposed to move to the north was to, to accommodate a stairwell to get to that space over the garage.
Are you adding space over the garage from what is there now, Mr. Anderson?
That's correct. And, and, and let's circle back to the second floor plan and, and we can, you know, it will come into focus.
Okay, and now let's move to the northeast corner of the structure, please.
Okay, this is that. Breakfast bump that we had, I had shown before. It's currently. Within the setback line and goes over to the porch and would be over here. And in it's being proposed to be centered in the space. And, and by centering it in the space, it would, it would go into the side yard setback, no further than the existing structure, but it would. Go past the side yard setback line, which is indicated by the dashed line here.
Right, okay.
Mr. Anderson, the porch that's in the front left-hand corner of the, of the property, can I assume that there is a roof over that porch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Being proposed.
So show us to further Mr. Laver's point from before. Where, where is the neighboring property and what is the proximity to that 9.6 corner? That obviously caused.
You can see it called out right here.
Right, where, where, where is the, how far is the neighboring property from that line? Do we have a photograph or a depiction of that anywhere, Mr. Anderson?
I, I do not, I mean, like where the existing dwelling is.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what caused them to employ Mr. Gazarovski to raise a complaint about that.
The, the garage is the closest structure. But once we cut, once we agreed to pull the porch back in my discussions with Mr. Gazarovski to, to. Equal the current nine foot, nine foot, six inch setback reflected in the other porch, right there where Mr. Anderson's got his cursor. Mr. Gazarovski advised that his clients were acceptable with that reduction.
So what is depicted is what was agreed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And just for clarity on what something Ms. Quigley brought up before. You've taken the previously enclosed space on the riverside and put that enclosed space over the garage to have a net zero effect. Is that, is that fair to assume?
That's correct. And actually, you know, net, it's, it's, it's small, but it's a 28 square foot reduction in habitable floor.
That's where, that's what's happening. So it's, so it's just in previously enclosed space from another portion of the house is now open and put over the garage.
That, that's correct. So you know, it's, it's net, net a, a little bit less than a wash or a little bit better than a wash, however you want to look at it.
It does create bulk in the height, though.
Yeah. Does that exacerbate the side yard setback deficit on the second floor? Or the new space is being created on the garage?
I, I would, I would think that it does.
Cause you. I would think that it does, but I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, it's.
Can you see the dash line here?
Yeah.
It's the side, that's the setback, so.
That's the setback.
By going vertical, it definitely does.
You're putting the gym on the upstairs in the garage and underneath two little, new little wings, right?
It, it's, it's, it's under a pitched roof now and part of that pitched roof would be into the side yard setback.
So there is actually a little more purple over that, that part of the, the plan then.
Yeah, I.
How much does the height of the garage change, Mr. Anderson?
Hmm, that's a good, good, let me, I, can I give you a, a guesstimate? I don't have the existing measurements here, but I.
You have the, the current front elevation and the proposed front elevation?
I have the, yeah, I do, I do.
Can you bring those up on a split screen basis for the board's comparison?
Oh, I can do, I can toggle back and forth.
Okay, well, that's a good, good start. Thanks.
If you don't mind, I'm going to minimize this for the time being and see if I can. I, I can find my way back there. Let's see.
And, and as we. And, and, and as we leave the SP one, just want to make sure the board understands, so the purple color is the area that's non-conforming.
All right. Yep. Can, I, I was going to take these in a different order, but if you don't mind, I'll, I'll start with the front of the elevation, because that will.
And, and again, I see at the bottom center of this page, the word existing, so that was existing before the construction started.
No, this is the existing now, this is not, they've already, this is what was permitted and they're, and it's, it's under construction right now.
There's no additional space on top of the garage.
Okay.
Not yet.
And so really, what, what's being proposed is to extend this porch over, and then it is, Ms. Quigley was saying, to extend the roof here.
What does that look like, okay? So you're not re- where's the ten-foot line?
The setback, it, it's probably about right. It's not.
Flat exacerbation vertically.
I, I think that was a good point, I think it, it, that would, that would exacerbate the pre-existing non-conformity of the side yard. Right, I, I think, I'm not sure.
That's correct, it would, because you're adding a second story above an existing non-conforming, you're exacerbating the existing non-conforming condition requiring variance relief.
And, and, and for the record, in my notice, I did call that out, I said, I, I said also on the east side yard, the applicant will be reframing the second floor above the garage with no change in the footprint to permit a home gym on the second floor, and a portion of the increase in the volume of the second floor extends into the twenty-feet side yard setback, but not beyond the easterly wall of the existing garage, which is ten point seven feet from the easterly side yard, so I, I did call that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so this, this gives a, a pretty good idea, though, of what's being proposed. Again, it's, it's to really pull that porch-like element over across the front, just to give it a uniform porch-like thing, even though part, part of it's enclosed, but to give a nice uniform roof over it, and then to add that space and, and roof line over the garage.
Well, proportionally, it makes it a lot more attractive, right, to have that additional height in the garage, since it's a little unfortunate that the garage is sort of jutting out from the front of the house, right?
It, it does, I mean, you can see right away, it, it looks, it, it, it's a vestige of kind of the, the incremental growth that had happened over time, which was just box on box and box, it, it kind of it brings that roof line to kind of echo the main gable on the, on the main house, it looks a little bit more traditional, and, and, you know, having those go down rather than having that flat roof and so forth happen there. So, so that's the front. The rear or water side. So it's bringing the two sides into plane, which they are not now, and that really doesn't show up in this drawing, but it's to clean up all these other shed roofs and to, again, use that little pergola on the one side to match the bay window on the other side, and then to take out that enclosed porch and make it an open porch. And again, you can see here where the two sides are made more uniform and subordinate to the, the main part, to really let that be the main driver of it, the original part of the house, and then that these two are kind of get calmed down and, and brought into sort of a more supportive role of, of that, that main section.
Mr. Anderson, you've been very thorough, the one thing I don't think I fully comprehend yet is how the second floor is changing, could you give the second floor floor plan, toggle back and forth and show us what the changes are, please?
Sure, and you know what, before I show you the second floor, which I'll, that will help a lot, but I want to show you the east elevation, that may help a little bit. And so what's being proposed over here, Mr. Chairman, is to bring this wall out here in alignment on this side, and then it's that pitched roof over there.
Judy, can you make your mic, please?
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you see how that's in alignment now?
Yes.
Okay, and then let me show you in the floor plan, so that that, that will give you a plan view of the same thing. Can you see that? So it's bringing these two walls into alignment. It's not clear when you're looking at the rear elevation, because it looks like they are, but they're not. I mean, it, there is this kind of stepping thing going on, and what we're proposing is to give a uniform.
So you're coming forward in the northeast corner, you've added the space above the garage, which doesn't exist as of today, you've reconfigured the interior wall, staircase, what have you, but there's no additional space on the second floor beyond the garage and the slight bump out on the northeast corner.
Right here, yes, correct.
Does anybody, did, did you get through what you wanted to get through, Mr. Anderson, or does anybody have any questions regarding the architectural stuff? I know we have a landscape architect and we have a planner yet to go.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is I wanted to have Mr. Anderson also cover the revised front elevation per the settlement that was reached with the Moniker Trust.
I'll be very quick on that.
Very, very, yeah, just to, to the point, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And if I can let me see if this is going to do this for me or not. I think I can do it, okay, this is where we had originally had it proposed, which extended further than the pre-existing side yard setback or pre-existing the nine point six, and in, in discussions with the neighbors, we pulled that back so that it was in alignment with that nine foot six here, and that's what it looks like in plan and in elevation. You can see it. That's being moved to the nine foot six in elevation.
Right.
So a couple of feet get shaved off the, the westerly side of that porch?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Reikens, the applicant is only proposing the modified drawing reached in compromise with the neighbor, correct?
The, the one that, the, the one that, Mr. Anderson, could you toggle that again?
Yeah, and the answer is yes.
The, the answer is yes, but just, just again, so the record's clear on it. So previously submitted no, November eleven twenty revisions, yes.
So the, so the record's clear, it looked better before you modified it.
Ah, thank you, but again, we're trying to accommodate the neighbor's request.
I understand. Mr. Anderson, could you, could you just go back to the prior, please, and just show me again, so I know where you're looking when you said it would change?
It, it, it is.
No, no, the, the, the floor plan, the prior one. Please.
Yes, happily, okay. This is where it extended further than the existing den library.
Where? It's going back and forth across the whole page.
Okay, it's, it's right here that we, we're going to pull it in.
Just, just the front left corner of the, of the, of the building, Mr. Irene.
Can you see that?
If you, if you follow the diagonal line, which runs from the middle of the page on the left side towards the center right?
I see it, thank you.
Okay, now if you look at the, at the bottom left corner of the building, you'll see that it's being pulled in to now toe that line. That's what Mr. Gazarovski asked.
So that's the nine point six, that's the, that's the nine point six side yard setback shown on the Krog plan.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
And again, that's pursuant to the November eleven twenty twenty revisions. Just for our record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I've got for Mr. Anderson, unless the board has further questions of Mr. Anderson, and I'm grateful for his thorough explanation.
Mr. Reikens, I want to ask a quick question with regard to the Florida ratio and how things change when you measure to the bulkhead. Because our standard that you've laid out for us is the existing structure, when you reduce the size of the lot for the ratio, your, your violation increased, but so did your, so did your existing, is that why there was really no change to what is going on here as a result of that recapulation of the ratio?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to let Mr. Anderson give a, a brief history, if he could, please, with regard to the calculation of a lot area, which in turn triggered these other metrics that you're referencing.
Okay. Yeah, I would really just be reiterating what you already said. We had originally gone to, to see what could be done as a right, and then we went ahead and did the plans, and we were instructed at the time to use the state claim line or what the former mean-high water line was at the time, I used that where everything was conforming, and then as we resubmitted this last fall, there was a further review of the project, and it was determined that the, we should not have used the state claim line, the mean-high water line as, you know, as the board reviewed it, and as you said, we went ahead and we, we revised the numbers, but I think yeah, the intent was, as I think has been very carefully pointed out, we, we're really looking to just sort of reallocate that space within the structure, because we thought it would be better used there over the garage, and it would be better not to have that other enclosed river room, and, and not to confuse things matters at all here. I don't know if any of you ever saw the renovation that our firm was involved in, no variances or anything, but down by the boat club, what was referred to as nine eleven River Road. We used a similar strategy there, where some of the space that was, they make these river rooms that, that really more or less block the view of the river, which is the best thing to the majority of the house, there we went ahead and vacated that and allocated the, the space elsewhere in the building as is, was the strategy here, so it just happened to be to net out a little bit less than what was there previously.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Satisfactory, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, indeed, any questions, Mr. Anderson, before we move on, folks?
I just have a few questions in my report, if that's okay?
Sure, Lena, please.
Okay, just to, Mr. Anderson, can you just confirm that the building height was calculated in accordance with borough definitions?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any changes proposed to the detached garage at this time? That you are aware of?
Not that I'm aware, no.
Okay. And then was the habitable floor area calculated in accordance with the borough definitions?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe that's all my questions for Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, how many feet were shaved off the porch in order to satisfy Mr. Gazarovski's client?
Gosh, I, I don't have, I thought that I would have that number here, I don't, I, it's, it's approximately two feet.
Thank you. And that was enough to satisfy him.
Yes, doctor.
There's a very logical explanation of what he requested, because he asked to essentially hold the line, that the, that the negative obviously is architectural, and you know, you know, we can see it. Okay, Mr. Reikens.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Anderson, thank you, the applicant next call Stephen Krog, registered licensed landscape architect. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Krog has been equally frequently before the board with regard to satisfying his credentials.
Previously accepted as an expert in architecture, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Krog. I'm wondering if you could take a moment, and let's go back to SP one, if we could, please, and share with the board the larger orientation of the building to the beautiful waterfront lot that we've got here.
Is that exhibit fully displayed on everyone's screen?
It is.
Again, perhaps. Let's look at this.
And for the record, this was previously marked as exhibit A dash nine.
A dash nine, thank you, Mr. Irene.
That, that's correct, so, so this exhibit as displayed on your screen has north to the top of your screen, obviously, then south is to the bottom, east to the right, west to the left. This plan depicts the residents that were, is the subject of the application this evening. It also shows the existing swimming pool, which is slated to remain as well as the freestanding detached garage, which uniquely spans across the prop- property line to the south, this structure includes four garage bays, two of which, the northern half is associated with the Anderson property, and the two bays to the south are associated with lot six to the, to the west, the property.
Is there any way to enlarge the, the drawing? I, I think it's very tough to see. Thank you.
How's that scale, good?
Slightly better, yeah, thank you.
On, on the one hand, we're trying to depict the macro conditions, but on the other hand, we know the board needs the micro details.
Yes.
So we can certainly toggle back and forth as.
I wasn't aware, so there's another garage on the property?
So there's a detached garage, Mr. Nuchesny, that it, it's an interesting situation, so that garage is actually, it's owned half by the applicants, the Andersons, and the southerly half is owned by Mr. Gazarovski's clients. And it's got four bays that face west, two of which are on the Anderson property, and two of which are on the Moniker Trust property.
Oh, I see, so it's oriented, okay, I got it.
So nobody knows the origins, other than it seems to have been built maybe in the nineteen thirties, and I'm going to work with Mr. Gazarovski, hopefully post-approval, to produce some kind of a shared maintenance agreement on the outside, because there is none of record.
And that's included in the lot coverage calculations, I'm assuming.
It, it, it is, that, that's correct, and I, and I also noticed this as an existing condition, because technically, it's a detached garage in the front yard.
I don't want to tip Mr. Gazarovski's hand, but I think he wants three bays.
Well, I think, I, I, I want, I want to share with the board that the, the neighbors always got along fine on the garage, I think they shared a common, coincidentally, I think they shared interest in a common type of vehicle. So that, that has, has not, has never been an issue, I'm, I'm very pleased to share.
Mr. Reikens, is the other half of the garage connected to his parcel?
It, it is on his parcel.
It wraps around like that?
Uh, yes, it does.
It straddles it, right?
And, and they're actually cross easements, and it's, it's, it's an interesting legal, legal arrangement, they're actually cross easements in favor of everybody's given the odd configuration. It's kind of the, the opening of a funnel, the way River Lawn ends on the easterly end.
But his lot is like the Big Dipper, it comes back around the lot.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're, you're nothing with that, right, that remains as it is?
That, there is nothing proposed to be done with that detached garage. Okay, so, Mr. Krog, you are orienting the board to what we've got, what else we've got going on at the property?
Yes, so would it be helpful to look at the landscape plan, that might be a bit more illustrative?
That sounds like a great idea.
Technical questions, so here's the, the landscape plan. And what this is, again, illustrating the existing dwelling here with its attached garage, the detached garage that we're talking about, the driveway, which gives access to the attached garage here, that existing swimming pool that's going to, to remain. The property, from a landscape standpoint, includes a number of large existing deciduous and evergreen trees, there's a very large oak tree in the backyard to the north of the swimming pool, there's a large maple along the eastern property line, and a combination of oak, maple, and some holly, existing holly trees along the western property. And a combination of oak, maple and some holly, existing holly trees along the western property line. The lighter green area that you see here is all lawn. The lawn slopes toward the bulkhead and the Navisink River to the north here. By way of, uh, proposed landscaping, um, we are intending to plant a continuous row of new evergreen holly trees to the west of the, uh, the dwelling.
Could you zoom in a little bit, please? Sorry, could you zoom in a little bit, Mr. Krog? Thank you. Even one notch more?
Okay.
Terrific. Thank you.
There we go. There we go.
So this extensive buffering that's proposed for that westerly line?
That's correct. So the, uh, the larger, um, evergreens you see here are the, uh, are the existing hollies. This is an existing oak, existing maple, and, uh, we're intending to, uh, connect the dots in a sense with here, the darker green, uh, symbols are the evergreen trees. Uh, so it will be a, uh, a very formidable screen between the dwelling and the adjacent, uh, property. And, uh, and extending northward toward the, uh, toward the river, uh, we're intending to add a continuous private hedge along the western property line, which will extend, um, to the bulkhead. There and on the eastern property line, uh, similarly, uh, we're intending to plant a continuous private hedge that will run from the bulkhead, um, all the way along the eastern property line and will terminate near the front of the detached garage. So we're intending that there's going to be a, a very high degree of privacy beyond what is existing on the site, um, currently. And then finally, when the project is completed, um, the owner intends to add some, uh, uh, foundation plantings, uh, evergreen and flowering shrubs around the, uh, the foundation of the house, um, as well. So it'll be a, quite a formidable planting. And I should mention that, uh, in February of this past year, twenty twenty, we submitted and had approved a tree removal and mitigation plan. In accordance with that submission and that approved plan, uh, some existing trees were removed and this landscape plan shows the two additional oak trees that are, uh, proposed and will be planted as mitigation for the trees that were removed. Those, those two trees are shown here to the northeast of the, uh, of the dwelling.
Mr. Krog, where, where's your existing construction entrance?
To the rear.
All, all access, uh, will, will, will come through, through here to, onto the property. And you mean, uh, uh, well, we're actually not proposing any, uh, any substantial construction in the rear yard, other than this, uh, little masonry patio. That you see here and access, uh, is available, uh, at the current time on, on both the east and west sides of the, uh, of the residence. We have, um, um, the, uh, the fence for the pool, starts at the northeast corner of the existing, uh, attached garage, runs down the easterly property line and then similarly we have a, uh, the code compliant swimming pool fence along the western property line, which returns, uh, to the northwestern corner of the house. Uh, here we have a, a double gate prepare, uh, proposed at the eastern side to allow for, uh, lawn maintenance and what have you. Uh, so we do have a, a six foot, um, wide, um, lawn accessway into the rear yard for landscape maintenance.
How are the existing contractors accessing the rear of the property or the front of the property to the river?
The, the front of the property, all, all access is, um, directly from, um, River Lawn Drive and the front garage or driveway area is being used as a staging area for materials. At the current time.
So I, I, I always understood a house facing the water, the front is to the water, but I'll, I'll use the terms that we're using tonight. The back of the house has to get access for the purpose of construction. We're talking about minimal side yards on both sides of this house, nine feet. Where are we running the trucks or the vehicles that need to get to the, the back of the house?
Um, we, uh, we don't have any need for vehicles of that size to, uh, the only construction materials are, um, framing materials and other things that, um, can be manually carried, um, for the construction.
I, I, I would venture to guess that there is heavy machinery that needs to get to the back of that house. And when you redo the pool, you're going to need it as well. I'm going to ask you what you're doing to preserve the existing vegetation. I understand what you're putting in that's new. But I'm under, I'd like to understand what you're doing to try and protect what's already there because you don't have much room. Um, and that sort of traffic and construction could definitely affect whether or not these plants are going to make it.
Uh, well, let's see. So the, the, um, uh, the current condition, uh, on the easterly side of the property, does not have any vegetation at all, um, at the current time. So, uh, we have that, um, essentially that, um, nine point, nine point five, nine, nine feet, six inches of accessway here, um, uh, at the current time. And, uh, similarly on the, uh, western side of the house, um, the proposed evergreens that are shown here are not in place at, at the current time. So, um, so there is access.
It's the larger, older trees that I'm trying to understand. And, and as you know, when you do construction and use machinery within the drip line, you're going to damage the roots and put the, put the plants at risk. Can you get around the existing attached garage? Are those trees there to the east?
Uh, the, um, uh, the four trees you see, uh, depicted here are, um, small flowering trees. This is a crepe myrtle, a kusa dogwood, a spruce and a Hawthorne. Um, and, uh, I don't foresee there being any damage to, uh, to those trees by, um, accessing the rear yard from, from this pathway. What we, what we routinely do to protect trees on construction sites, which really should be a part of any, um, building, um, application is to, it's actually a rather simple technique that, um, that we use of, of putting a substantial amount of wood chips or other organic material under the drip line of the tree to cushion the ground where any vehicles do need to gain access. And, uh, and that material then is removed, um, when the construction is done and there no longer needs to be, um, access by vehicles.
You know, I, I don't know this site that well, but I know that there's a few big trees here that are pretty important. I'm raising an issue that I, I hope the, the applicant will, will take note of that if you run vehicles and, and construction materials on the west side, you're going to risk some of those older trees. And if you can fit it on the east, you're going to do much better. And I'm not just talking about the construction that's currently going on. You know, you're going to do the, you're going to do the pool, you're going to do it all. I, I would suggest that, uh, even for the board members, that, that being able to preserve the, the, the larger trees on this lot is really important. And anything and everything should be done, uh, to reroute the traffic to, to do what can be done to preserve them.
We can certainly work with, um, the, uh, the borough's, uh, forester, uh, to provide a, uh, mitigation, uh, plan for the preservation of the root system and, uh, drip line as, uh, Mr. Krog has indicated. No, no problem with that. We certainly don't want to harm the trees that we've shown as preserving for obvious reasons.
Yeah, Mark, I don't know what kind of distance you have there on the east, but, and I'm not suggesting that you need to work with him. There, there's a limitation in, in, in what can be done to protect. If you're really running trucks, I'm actually thinking about the pool. I'm thinking about the stonework and.
Yeah. Well, I believe the pool and the patio, uh, around the, around the pool are proposed to remain. They're existing conditions.
I know. I'm just being honest because it's not going to remain. It's going to be upgraded and I'm fine with that. It's not on the, I'm, I'm just giving you straight information. Those old trees in order to be protected should be avoided. So whatever you can do to get around the garage to the east is, is your best way to get there. Um, and if you try and sneak in on the west, those trees are going to die. Maybe not next year, but a couple of years after that, now would be a shame.
So noted and we don't want them to die for the record.
Correct.
Mr. Krog, on the western side of the property, how large are those, uh, holly trees that you're using to connect the, uh, the larger trees?
The, uh, the proposed hollies you're asking about? These?
Yes.
Um, yeah, well, they would be, uh, planted at, uh, between six and eight feet in height.
Because here's a substantial barrier of trees there now. Uh, was there any objection to taking out the existing barrier and then, uh, not creating a, a comparable sized barrier?
You were, you were referring to some of the plantings that are on the neighboring property as well?
Yeah, that area is pretty heavily, uh, heavily treed on the western side of the property.
Yes, it is.
And, and when you take out some of those, uh, heavy tree areas, is the, are the existing hollies going to be enough to give you proper privacy from the adjacent property?
I think the combination of, uh, the ones that we're, uh, we're retaining, um, which would be, uh, this one just to the west of the porch, as well as these, uh, to the west of the parking area in combination with the new plantings. And what's not depicted here is that the neighbor has their own, uh, evergreen planting, uh, a combination of hollies and arborvitae on their side of the property line, um, as well. So, uh, we in essence have a, a, a double row of, uh, of planting to ensure that there will be, uh, a complete, uh, visual blockage. Um, and as Mr. Aiken mentioned, uh, previously, what is facing, um, the, uh, Anderson property, um, on lot six, um, are actually the garage doors of that adjacent residence. It's not the, the actual house itself, which is farther, um, to the north on their property. Thank you. It's actually to the applicant's, uh, advantage to screen the view of the garage doors, probably more, more importantly than, uh, the adjacent neighbors, uh, given that it is their garage doors. It's not, uh, it's not living space of the house that's fronting, um, on the Anderson property.
Mr. Krog. Could you scroll down or up? Uh, I want to see it behind the pool, please. I'm sorry.
Oh, the other way.
And I wanted to understand the pool fence.
Yeah. So the pool, the pool fence, um, starts at the, uh, on the westerly side of the house. It starts at the northwest corner, extends to the property line, runs all the way down. The, uh, westerly property line terminates at the, uh, the bulkhead. And on the easterly side, it starts at the bulkhead and, uh, extends all the way down the property line. The easterly side and connects back, um, at the northeast corner of the attached garage.
There's no pool fence along the bulkhead line?
Um, the bulkhead is considered a, uh, non-climbable, uh, structure for, um, for, and so it, it is code compliant for, uh, pool protection.
When it high tide, there, it doesn't, is there a low tide or high tide here or?
Um, I, I, I mean, it's a decision for the, uh, the, uh, building inspector, but, uh, we've done multiple waterfront properties in, um, uh, Fairhaven, and, uh, this has always been the arrangement that was preferred. The idea being that presumably that if you can swim in the Navisink River, um, it's unlikely that you would, um, sort of climb up the bulkhead and then have a problem swimming in someone's swimming pool. It's a bit of an oddity, but that's how the local building inspector has, uh, has ruled on this routinely. There are virtually no, um, uh, pool fences, uh, running along bulkheads. There's some, some residences do have pool fences, which are completely independent of the bulkhead, uh, for their own sort of planning purposes or for aesthetic purposes, but, um, but this condition has been deemed, uh, compliant, um, by the, uh, by the building inspector.
Chairman, I, I recall we've had several conversations about properties that are on the river and and had several conversations about, um, access from the river and requiring fences across that.
Well, first of all, it is not an issue that's directly, uh, before the board this evening. I think that any concern can be addressed through a condition, um, that it, uh, meet the requirements of the construction officials relative to the requirements related to safety. Are you suggesting something more than that?
No, I, I guess if the, it's already been ruled on. I, I recall fences being asked to be put across those spaces.
We, we would stipulate to meet whatever the, uh, the, the building code requires, uh, Mr. Ridgeway, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ridgeway, I think the matter, uh, there's one matter I'm thinking of where there was actually an application for a pool. And there was a discussion about what was going to be done. This is an existing pool and, and my guess is, Ross, Mr. Aikens, that there is not currently a fence along the bulkhead line.
I do not believe there's a fence along the bulkhead line currently.
Correct. That, that other matter, Mr. Chairman, there is a very short rear yard setback. And if you came out of the pool and you, you stepped over, you were going to fall down the bluff. So there were safety concerns in terms of the setback deviation and mitigating any adverse impact that might result, uh, from that.
Mr. Ridgeway, I, I'd be comfortable adding a comment in any resolution which simply amplified the fact that the board raised it and wanted to be, uh, comforted with a building inspector sign off on whatever the final plan was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, Mr. Krog, uh, any other, um, significant landscaping improvements for the board's consideration?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, board members, I have no further questions to Mr. Krog at this time.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Krog, I'm just going to ask you because it's, it's definitely my issue. If, uh, the board saw it necessary to require that access to the rear for construction-related activities be on the east side of the property, would there be any reason that that would, um, in any way create a, a problem with regard to, uh, the landscape design or construction logistics that you're aware of?
I believe we could agree to that. That's correct. Yes. I don't think there'd be a problem.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything further for Mr. Krog? Okay, Mr. Reikens. Okay, thank you, Mr. Krog. Uh, applicant now calls Jason Fichter with regard to, uh, expert planning testimony.
But before we do that, we're going to mark.
One more question, uh, Mr. Irene, do we have to mark, uh, Mr. Krog's SP two?
And before we do that, we're going to mark as exhibit A dash ten, the landscape plan prepared by Mr. Krog dated August fourteen, two thousand twenty, revised through and including November eighteen, two thousand twenty.
Eight, ten?
Eight, ten.
Eight, ten.
Mr. Victor's coming on for planning only?
He is.
Been accepted as an expert.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mr. Fichter. You've heard the testimony of, uh, Mr. Anderson and you've heard the testimony of Mr. Krog. Are you familiar with the application and the relief that the applicants are seeking this evening?
I am.
Terrific. Uh, can you share with the board, uh, the conclusions that you've reached as a licensed professional planner?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is an existing developed single-family property. We've got a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the river. We've got forty-eight point six feet of frontage at the dead end of River Lawn Drive. The lot shape is similar to a, a narrow slice of pie. And the existing home is located in a narrow portion of the lot. We're in the R thirty zone and the standard lot in the zone is required to be thirty thousand square feet and a hundred twenty-five feet wide. So right off the bat, we can see that any improvements to the home are going to face challenges for zoning compliance. The good news is that the municipal land use law was written to address properties like this one. The existing, uh, detached garage is a unique situation. You heard some testimony on that. It's only partially on the applicant's property and the remaining portion of it is used by their neighbor. It has four spaces, two are used by the applicant and two are used by the neighbor. Uh, and that is a legacy condition, as you heard. So the applicant seeking approval to renovate the existing home to modern standards and to be more in keeping with the neighborhood and Mr. Anderson provided, uh, very thorough testimony to that. Interestingly, and we don't hear this very often, the square footage of the home is proposed to be reduced. The existing home square footage is four thousand one hundred fifty-two square feet. And the proposed home is four thousand one hundred twenty-four square feet. So that's a decrease of twenty-eight square feet. Now, we also heard some discussion earlier, but just to, uh, put a bow on it, the maximum floor area that's permitted in this zone is five thousand one hundred eighty square feet. Uh, building coverage proposed, uh, is going to increase only slightly, but it's going to remain well below what's permitted by ordinance. You permit twenty percent, we're proposing fourteen point four. So in terms of the massing of the building relative to building coverage, we're well below what's permitted. So the variances that we're requesting, um, I say potentially, but, uh, we're requesting variance relief. but we're requesting variance relief under the D four criteria. That's a floor area ratio variance. And you heard the discussion earlier about potentially required. But out of an abundance of caution, we're going to request that relief. The zone that we're in permits a floor area ratio of point one five. So again, the square footage of the existing home is four thousand one hundred fifty-two square feet, which is an FAR of, now I'm going to carry this out. It's an FAR of point one seven two seven. And we're proposing to reduce the square footage of the home to four thousand one hundred twenty-four square feet, and that gives us an FAR of point one seven one six. So that's a reduction in floor area ratio. The intention of altering the house is simply to create a better architectural layout and, and aesthetic appeal from the exterior. Again, you heard thorough testimony from Mr. Anderson on that. FAR variances, they're D variances, but they're not about site suitability. They're about demonstrating that the site can support the additional floor area. And in this case, the site's already supporting it, so there's no issue there. As a matter of fact, we're actually reducing the square footage of the home. So that's further evidence that there's going to be no conflict between the site and the size of the home. We're also requesting a side yard variance, a single side yard variance. The, the zone requires twenty feet. And on the east side, we exist at nine point six feet, and we're proposing nine point five. That's essentially unchanged, and the change is relative to that small covered side entry. We also have the addition over the garage, which does not exacerbate the side yard, but it does impede upon the volume above. We had discussion on that earlier, so we're requesting that. And then on the west side, we exist at nine point six feet, and we're proposing to maintain that same nine point six feet. So that remains unchanged. And then we're adding a front porch by essentially squaring off the southwest corner of the home or as, as we've been referring to the lot, the front left. But we decided or agreed to shorten that front porch a little bit so that we don't encroach into the side yard any further than we are today. And that was the agreement Mr. Aikens referred to with the neighbor. We're requesting variance relief from the combined side yard requirement. Your ordinance requires forty feet, and today it exists at nineteen point two feet, and we're proposing to go to nineteen point one. That's related to that same change on the east side that's going from nine point six feet to nine point five. It's the same difference. So I believe that these variances are C one hardship variances. I'm also going to provide some testimony later following the C two criteria as well. There are resolutions on this property from nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety that are reviewed relative to this topic anyway. And the, the findings in those resolutions recognize the hardship imposed by this lot's geometry. The variances are triggered due to the exceptional narrowness and shape of the lot and the existing, the location of the existing home in the narrow portion of the lot. So I want to add a quick note about your determination of hardship. It seems sometimes this is a conversation that comes up after planning testimony. So I figured I'd just throw it out there in case it helps anybody. So the courts have repeatedly found, and I'm going to give you a quote here. Quote, "The claimed hardship need not result in the inability to make any use of the property." Typically, the contention is that the strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance in view of that property's unique characteristics impose a hardship that may inhibit the extent to which the property can be used," end quote. And for reference, I took that from the Kaufman case, which referenced the Davis Enterprises case. So I think that this basis directly applies to this lot. The front porch is a hardship because it creates a house consistent with the neighborhood, allows for enjoyment by the owner, and it just looks very attractive. But the geometry of the lot precludes the owner from creating a reasonably sized and fully conforming front porch. In addition, the existing home is situated where the lot is at its narrowest, so it becomes very difficult, if not impossible, to modify the home at all without triggering a variance. There are other minor technical variances created by the application which are constrained by the same hardships. The northwest corner of the existing home is proposed to be removed in favor of adding a patio. This is where Mr. Anderson talked about putting the rear elevation in the, in a, the same plane. So in order to create that symmetry and to improve the aesthetic appeal of the renovated home's rear elevation, the architect is proposing to attach a small pergola to the home above a portion of that new patio. About half of that proposed pergola is within the required twenty-foot side yard, but it's, it's set back at fifteen point six feet from the property line, and that's well beyond what exists today at nine point six feet along that same side yard. Even though the pergola is encroaching into the required side yard, I consider it a net benefit since it's merely decorative, and a portion of the home is proposed to be removed. A very small footprint expansion is proposed on the northeast corner of the home, and that has a pergola above it as well. About half of the additional footprint is within the required twenty-foot side yard. But again, that additional footprint is fifteen and a half feet from the side property line, and the pergola is fourteen point two feet from the side property line. And both of those are well beyond what exists as a side yard today, which is nine point six feet. And then a decorative pergola is proposed over the existing garage doors, and a little less than half of it is within the required twenty-foot side yard, but it is set back at eleven point one feet from the side property line, and that also is more than the existing nine point six feet that exists today. And that pergola also is inside the limits of the existing garage, so it does not exacerbate horizontally. There are a number of existing non-conforming conditions that are out there, and I can just kind of tick through those very quickly. Lot coverage, which we're actually reducing, by the way, it's conforming. I'm sorry, not conforming. We're reducing it. So the thirty percent is permitted, thirty-three point three percent is existing, and thirty-three point two percent is what's proposed. We also have existing non-conformities for lot area, lot width and frontage, a side yard to the detached garage, a side yard to a shed at the northeast corner of the property, side yard to an AC unit, side yard to a generator, driveway impervious in the front yard. Detached garage exists in the front yard, and technically ordinance does not permit storage for more than three vehicles. So with the attached garage and the detached garage, four spaces exist for vehicles today. And again, these all exist, and there's no changes proposed to any of those conditions. So to demonstrate the purposes of planning in support of the variances that we're requesting, I took a look. I think there are a number that we're advancing. The first one is I believe this is an appropriate development which promotes the general welfare. So this is a dramatic improvement to an existing home, which will enhance the entire neighborhood. We're providing adequate light air and open space. So on the east side of the home, the only potential for impact to light air and open space is that covered entry. But again, it existed before. It's just proposed to be rebuilt in a slightly different location, and it's very small, and it's a single story. On the west side of the home, the pergola is set back further than the existing home, and it's proposed where a portion of the home is being eliminated. The front porch doesn't encroach any further than the existing home, and that was a design change that was made as a result of conversations with the neighbor, which you heard about. That porch is also only a single story, and it's open, which provides views, light, air, and open space. The home is located in a very narrow portion of the lot, and that's how these variances become necessary. It's an existing condition that the owner and architect were very sensitive to during design, as you heard throughout their testimony. But when considering light air and open space, it's better to have the home where it is today than to build a new home in a wider portion of the lot. That would put the home closer to the water, which would significantly impact the neighbor's views of the river, which is clearly the most important view that we would seek to protect. It's also worth noting that your master plan discourages knocking down existing homes to build new ones. So considering these points, I believe that light air and open space is protected with this application. And I should also note not to overlook it. The second story above the garage is well below the permitted height and well below the height of the rest of the home. So it's only a minor increase over what's there today. So I think that light air and open space is protected. We're promoting a desirable visual environment. I believe that this is a significant purpose advanced by this application. The proposed renovation is a dramatic improvement to the property, which then improves the entire neighborhood. Front porches, for example, are common in the neighborhood. So the addition of the porch furthers that development pattern, which also improves the entire neighborhood. And we heard thorough testimony from Mr. Anderson, very thoughtful, technical expertise about how to take the home the way it exists today, make some changes to it to make it look very attractive and make it look as if it's new and not renovated. So approving this application, I believe, would promote the desirable visual environment. Here's a purpose of planning that you probably don't hear about very often, but I think it's applicable here. It is to promote the maximum practical recovery and recycling of recyclable materials from municipal solid waste through the use of planning practices designed to incorporate the state recycling plan goals and to complement municipal recycling programs. So this is a relevant purpose of planning when talking about renovating existing buildings. Rather than knocking down and rebuilding, which is something your master plan discourages, reuse of the existing structure avoids creating unnecessary solid waste and purchasing new materials. So in essence, the existing home is being recycled here. In doing so, we're left with certain challenges since the existing home is located in a very narrow portion of the lot. Just about any version of renovating this home is likely to trigger a variance condition based on the geometry of the lot. And that's why I presented the variances to you as a hardship. So renovation of this home promotes this purpose of planning, but relief is required to do so. And the last purpose is I believe that we are conserving property values in the neighborhood. So the proposed renovations to this home are impressive. You've seen the exhibits. They'll clearly raise the property, the value of this property. And just like a rising tide raises all ships, I think the improvements to this home will improve the entire neighborhood. So I believe that this project will not only conserve values in the neighborhood, property values, that is, I believe it'll improve them. So in terms of the negative criteria, FAR variances are typically used to develop, to control development intensity of commercial and multifamily developments. It's uncommonly used to control the size of homes in single-family residential zones. The basis of your master plan dates back to a time before the Great Recession and even back a bit further than that, during a time when monster homes were becoming prevalent. I think most of us remember that time. So when that was happening, Fairhaven decided to use redundant controls to prevent the proliferation of monster homes. And as a result, your ordinance utilizes three levels of control. Those are floor area ratio, habitable floor area, and building coverage. So this project falls well under the limits of habitable floor area and building coverage. So habitable floor area is permitted at five thousand one hundred eighty square feet. We're proposing only four thousand one hundred twenty-four. And building coverage is permitted at twenty percent, and we're proposing only fourteen point four percent. And then again, the FAR is an existing non-conforming condition that we're proposing to improve by reducing the square footage of the home. So in other words, the renovation of the applicant's home follows the spirit of the ordinance and master plan while using the existing home. None of the proposed improvements have a noticeable impact on the neighbors or public. The front porch maintains the existing side yard setback and was a result of negotiations with the closest neighbor. One of the pergolas is being installed where a portion of the existing home is being eliminated, so that's a benefit. The other pergolas are small, decorative, and they're further from the property line than the existing condition. The covered entry on the east side, again, it, it already exists. It's just being relocated slightly and rebuilt. And the location of the front porch was created by squaring off a corner on the existing home and then modified in response to a discussion with the neighbor. Additionally, the porch is only a single story and it's open, both of which minimize any potential impact. And lastly, the porch is in the front yard and has no impact on views of the river, which I get, again, I believe is the most important consideration for our neighbors. Your master plan seeks to avoid intensification of development in the borough and to avoid large building expansions that are out of character with the borough neighborhoods and to avoid impairing visual and, avoid impairing the visual environment of the community or to deprive residents of light air and open space. So this application is actually proposing a renovation that will decrease the floor area of the existing home. And of course, I already went through light air and open space in detail. Your master plan seeks to avoid impacts from teardowns and expansions of existing buildings and monster homes. Those are terms right out of your master plan. And this application is for renovation, not a teardown, and we're not expanding the home. We're reducing it. Your master plan seeks to protect and enhance the small town and historic character of the borough and the desirable residential qualities of its neighborhoods. And based on the architectural plans that are being presented, I think the application clearly advances this objection, objective of your master plan. So with all of those points to consider, I think if this application was approved, it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public, nor would it substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Now, as you consider the negative criteria, I always like to highlight the word substantial. You're not evaluating if approving this application would cause a detriment to the public or an impairment to the zone plan. You're looking to see if it would cause a substantial detriment or a substantial impairment. And I don't believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. And on balance, I believe if approved, that the benefits of the application would substantially outweigh its detriments, if, if any, giving you the ability to approve this application with confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fichter. No further questions, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Fichter.
Board members, have any questions with regard to the planning testimony?
Yeah, I had a quick question. You stated that the hardship is based in the unique shape of the lot, specifically the narrowness of the southern end. And the hardship is also based in the fact the existing structure is farther toward the narrow end of the lot. But you are taking mass away from the north end of the structure on the wide end of the property, and you're moving it to the south end of the structure, the narrowest portion, which you stated was the hardship. So I'm just curious how that makes better planning sense.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I think the, the overarching answer to your question is the testimony that Mr. Anderson gave. In order to modify a house that was built many years ago and added on many times, and I, I believe Mr. Anderson's term was, it became a mishmash of additions. We have to work with that. I also heard Mr. Anderson talk about how the house was too deep and became less functional. So he needed to make it less deep. There is that porch in the back, which made a ton of sense to alter. The interior flow of the house he talked about makes more sense outside of that, that porch in the back that's being modified. What we're talking about in the front is a front porch, which I think provides some consistency in the neighborhood, gives the house some great aesthetic appeal. And it's very small, and it's a single story, and it's open. And then over the garage, we're talking about displacing some square footage of the home on top of the garage, but not a full second story. You saw Mr. Anderson's elevation, the view from the street, if you will. It's a very modestly sized garage. It doesn't increase all that much. And then, of course, the big picture is, I think, I mentioned a number of times throughout my testimony that I think the view you want to protect the most is the river. That's where people want to look. They want to look back that way. So any expansions back toward the river, I think, would be contrary to that objective. So I do think it makes sense the way it's done. I hope that helps.
That sounded like architecturally and aesthetically it makes sense. The question was, does it make better planning sense? If your hardship is the fact that it's all located in the narrowest end of the lot, does moving more of it to the narrowest end of the lot make better planning sense?
So the testimony I gave, as you said, you, you said it sounds like more architecturally and whatnot. I'm, I'm giving you my planning basis based on the architectural testimony that the architect gave. So yes, from a planning perspective, I think what's proposed makes more sense. So yes, from a planning perspective, I think what's proposed makes more sense than to expand the house back. I, I'd be willing to bet you, if you pull the architect up here and say, instead of going out toward the street, go out toward the water, it's either not going to work or there's going to be some massive changes that are going to be required because you have to completely change the interior flow of the house. It just wouldn't work. So I think from a planning perspective, that's contrary to what this lot calls for. Keep the views of the river open for all the neighbors and use the existing footprint of the house, which is essentially what we've done. We're just using the existing footprint of the house. It's not like we're doing big footprint expansions. We're just using the existing home where it is, and that's where the hardship comes into play. So I do think it is a better planning alternative. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else regarding planning? Ken, thanks. Mr. Akins, anything else?
Applicant rest, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any board members have any questions before we go to the public?
I have a few outstanding comments in my review letter that I have did not pick up along the way. Is it okay if I go over them real quick?
Please do, Ms. Gable. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I have a question for Mr. Anderson, the architect. Can you confirm that the attic is a story or a half-story pursuant to borough definitions?
I believe the rafters go all the way down to the plates at this, at the side. I guess I would ask for your clarification on that, whether it's a a story, I mean, a half-story or not a half-story. It's not.
Sure. So a half-story is defined as that portion of a building under a gable, hip, or gambrel roof, the wall plates of which on at least two opposite exterior walls are not more than two feet above the floor of such half-story.
Well, I know the plates go all the way down to the attic floor, all the way down. There, there is a, however, a gable on the front and on the back, which you can see, there's a taller ceiling in the back, so there's not even a uniform attic ceiling. So I don't, I, I think we'd be okay with it either way, whether it was deemed as a nada's half-story or, or, or a half-story. It, I, I think depending on how you read it, it can be termed either way. So whatever, I think that you would feel more comfortable with. It doesn't make really any difference with the application.
Right. So, but the attic would not be a full story under?
That's correct.
Okay. So wanted to make sure of that. And then I'm not sure which professional would be best to answer this question. But in my planning report, I posed whether or not the applicant considered reducing the driveway coverage as a mean to conform with the 25% imperious coverage in the front yard. I know it's an existing non-conforming condition, but I was just, you know, just a question that I posed in my report.
I think we'd direct that over to Mr. Krog potentially.
That's right. Yeah. The, as you know, this piece of property is at the very end of River Lawn Drive, which is a very narrow drive, a street, which does not accommodate parking, like parallel parking along the side without impeding vehicular access. And so the driveway as it exists and we're largely retaining that area as is, serves a very useful function of allowing visitors to this property to access the property and to park off of the street where there really is no available parking and also obviously gives access to both the detached garage and the attached garage simultaneously. And so from a functional standpoint and from a safety standpoint, it seems very valuable to have this gravel surface available for for both the occupants of the house, as well as I can tell you, having been on the property and having friends who live on River Lawn Drive, people like the UPS drivers and the FedEx delivery men tend to get to the end of River Lawn and are in a quandary as to how to turn themselves around. And they actually use the area in front of the detached garage as a area to do a multiple point K-turn to get themselves turned back around. So if we were to attempt to reduce that gravel driveway to meet the 25% limit, we would essentially eliminate the possibility of those vehicular movements at the end of River Lawn Drive.
Okay, that definitely satisfies my question. And then I just had, my last question is pertaining to any outside agency approvals and whether DEP, CAFRA, Freehold Soil Conservation District, or Two Rivers Water Reclamation Authority permits are required with this development application.
So maybe, Mr. Anderson, you can help field that one to the extent that any, if you're aware of any CAFRA or other DEP permits have been necessitated by the proposed improvements?
I, the current improvements would require any DEP approvals, additional DEP approvals.
Okay, thank you. And Freehold Soil, I believe we're disturbing less than 5,000 square feet of of soil. So that would seem to be exempt?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Gable, what's the date of the report that you're referring to?
My, this report is dated December 1st, 2020.
Thank you.
Sure. And that's all my questions from my report. All my other concerns have been addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gable.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board before we go to the public? All right, Mr. Millay, still there?
Yes, I am.
Great. So with regard to other members of the public that are participating with us tonight, if you are interested in asking any questions of the applicant's experts or making any statements with regard to this application, now is the time. I'd ask you to use the raise hand feature and our Zoom moderator Joe will bring you forward. I see a hand.
Bringing Jonathan in.
We've got two hands.
Yeah, we'll take, you want to take them one at a time or?
Of course. We acknowledge the second hand. We'll get to you second. Mr. Kingery, we have your name. You're muted and we have no video.
All right. Good evening. I am Jonathan Kingery. I live on 66 River Lawn Southwest to the Anderson property.
Hold on one second. We're going to ask Mr. Irene to swear in, please.
Mr. Kingery, if you'd raise your right hand, you do swear a testimony against board of the truth, all truth, nothing but truth, help you God. Thank you.
To you, Mr. Kingery. I'm sorry. We're ready for you now.
Jonathan Kingery, 66 River Lawn Southwest to the Anderson property. We are in Southwest being to the front yard near the detached garage. We're comfortable with the renovation plan that the Andersons have put forth.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was a little hard to hear you, but just to make sure it's clear. Do you live at 88 River Lawn? Is that the right address?
66. I'm sorry, the world called the stone to die. Can you hear me okay?
A little muffled. You're at 66 and you're, you've, you've said that you generally support the application as proposed before us tonight. Is that correct? Thank you. Your houses were five or six down from this house? Next door? Oh, on the interior, not on the water?
Correct.
Thank you. Great. Ms. Akins, you have any cross?
No cross. Thank you, Mr. Kingery.
Well done. Okay, we had a second hand.
Yep, I'm going to bring him in. There you go, Mr. Pizzola.
Mr. Pizzola, we have you on mute. No video. There's your video.
All right. How's everybody doing?
Great, thank you. If you could give us your name and your address, Mr. Irene's going to swear in, please.
Sure. Chris Pizzol and I'm at 56 River Lawn, which is south of the Andersons and just south next door to Jonathan who just spoke.
And we're going to swear in, Mr. Pizzol. You do swear a testimony against board of the truth, all truth, nothing but truth, help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm 100% on board with what the Andersons proposed and I'm excited for them to move forward with it and hope it all works out for them.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzol. Mr. Akins, any cross?
Thank you, Mr. Pizzoli. No cross.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We have, we have one more?
Yeah, I saw one more.
There you go, Mr. Hanson.
We got a mugshot of Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, could you give us your full names by your last, your address for the record, please?
John Hanson, 33 River Lawn Drive.
I'm going to swear in if you raise your right hand. You do swear a testimony against board of the truth, all truth, nothing but truth, help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
So like the others, I'm fully supportive of the, of the plan. I think it's in the character of the neighborhood. And it's, you have the front porch, I think is a great addition. A lot of, a lot of the houses on the street have, have a front porch and yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Akins, any cross?
No cross for Mr. Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members in the public that have any questions or?
We do, we do, we do have one more. Coming in your way. Ms. Rice.
Ms. Rice, we have you on mute. No video.
Here we go.
Here we go.
You're not Ms. Rice. So would you give us, give us your full names by your last, your address for the record, please?
Sure. Newton Rice, R.I.C.E. I'm directly to the east of the property on the river.
What's your address, sir?
30 Fair Waters Lane.
And I'm going to swear in. So you do swear a testimony against board of the truth, all truth, nothing but truth, help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm in full support of what he's doing. He's doing a very nice job with the house. It'll certainly look better than it was. I've lived here my whole life, so I've seen the property forever. And this is a great improvement.
Mr. Rice, I have a question for you. You are, you're immediately adjacent on the east side, correct?
That's correct.
So you might have heard if you've been here that I have a concern with regard to construction access and the trees and preserving what's there. Do you have any concerns to the extent that the construction access were dictated to be to the east side of the property, which would be adjacent to yours?
Not a bit. Not at all.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any questions, Mr. Akins?
No questions to Mr. Rice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Okay. Any other members of the public that have any questions or would like to make any comments regarding the application?
See none.
Give another minute.
And Judy, can you just confirm that no one has communicated with the board office? No one's tried to reach you indicating they've had any difficulties either logging on or we're trying to join the, the meeting and we're unable to do so? And you're muted right now. So no one's tried to reach you, Judy?
No.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Akins, we're done with the, the public. Do you have anything in closing?
Nothing in closing, other than to thank the board for the opportunity to present these witnesses and what we hope is a thorough presentation for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's deliberate.
I, I think it's a really nice application. I think the improvements to the state of what is existing or what was, especially from what was there two years ago, are significant. I, I think both in functionality and in form, I think on top of that, that the exacerbations to the side yard setbacks, which is really what we're talking about, are minimal. And especially since some agreement had been come with the neighbor regarding the front porch and, and I don't see any reason not to pursue this, this renovation. I think the applicants, I think the, the design is very, very nice.
Mr. Chairman, I think these old houses have, that have been added on and added on to present a real challenge. And I think the architect in this case did a really nice job pulling this whole thing together. If the porch extension with its coverage doesn't bother the neighbor in its, in its proposed form, I, I don't have a problem with it, especially since there's considerable space between that porch and the neighbor to the west. I have a hard time believing that the, the neighbor through Mr. Gazorowski had you take two feet off the porch because I don't see that as, you know, being a big deal, you know, in order to give the, the better cosmetic appearance of the house. I will piggyback on something that our chairman had said. The area to the east of the house where you're going to have access to the, to machinery, you should really take precautions against compacting the soil over there. Because if you compact the soil too much over there, you're going to have an awfully hard time growing grass. And I can attest to that from personal experience. Do everything you can to keep from compacting the soil over there, or you'll have a miserable time growing grass on that side. Otherwise, I think it's an excellent project. I think the house is going to look beautiful when it's done and I congratulate you on the plan.
Who's next?
I think that, like Mr. Anderson testified in his testimony, the point of the plan is to restore the architectural integrity of the house. And I think that the differences between the old, the current and the new, what's being proposed are so dramatic. And it's not really that much of an incursion into the, the requirements of the zoning code. So I have no problem fully supporting the application.
I, I agree. I, I don't have too much to add. I mean, they're not demolishing the home. I think, yeah, it's consistent with the plan. As we heard from the, consistent with the master plan, as we've heard from the testimony. A lot of pre-existing non-conformities here. Doesn't seem like they're being exacerbated too much. And in many cases, they're being reduced, albeit, you know, in a de minimis way. So I think the changes are, look very nice, are consistent with the neighborhood, looks like a significant improvement. And yeah, I don't have concerns with this one.
Anyone else?
I just would reinforce what everyone else said. I think this is a very nice project. I think the Andersons professionals did a very nice job with their presentation. And certainly I think the benefits of this project that way, it detriments a great margin.
So I'll jump in and say that, you know, this is, you know, I, I agree obviously with everybody. I think it's a great plan. I think it's well done. You seem to have taken a lot of time and effort to get started with other stuff and wait to come see us. You know, I hope that didn't take too much time and cost you too much money because I don't really see like this was ever particularly hard to figure out. It's a great renovation. Fairhaven is fortunate to have people like yourselves that are going to take the older housing stock, convert it and make it right. And I also want to appreciate the neighbors for coming. Sometimes they come, sometimes they don't, but it's always helpful, particularly those of you that live adjacent, Mr. Rice. It's just nice to know that you support the project. It's always valuable for us to hear that. So I thank everybody that participated tonight. Anybody else or anybody have a motion?
We just wanted to thank everyone for your time tonight. We know you volunteer and it's late. We really, really appreciate the time and attention that you guys have given and obviously to our team. Can't thank you guys enough. And we've said it before. So really, really thank, thank everyone.
Thank you so much. We wanted to leave it to the experts to handle everything, but thank you for your time. And especially to our neighbors too, for showing up and support. We really appreciate them. They've been wonderful throughout the process. So thank you all for your time tonight.
Thanks. So, so before we put on the motion, the one thing that I have that you've heard is this concern with regard to is this concern with regard to construction access and my inclination would be to include in the resolution a requirement that Mr. Kennedy, go take a look and just make a recommendation as to how this should be done. And I would also request that the applicant consider best practices, not just with regard to the renovation. You will have, if you have not already, vehicles getting to the back. Just pick the best possible route. It may not be possible to save everything, but particularly the trees that are substantial back there, you can't replace them. And so whatever you can do to be careful all the way through the, the pool renovation. You know, I think that that's, I think that that's important and I would, I would put that on the table for the other board members. I think the other thing that was raised by Mr. Ridgeway related to the fence, and I think we could simply highlight within the resolution a condition that the construction official be made aware of the situation and sign off on anything with regard to the safety fencing for the pool. Does anybody, does anybody object to my suggestion with regard to the construction access? If it's not a problem or not a concern for anybody else, I don't want to implement it unless there's some agreement that it's worth it.
I agree with that.
All right. It's a, it's a, clearly it looks like a difficult site, so I'm sure they're gonna take all the precautionaries. And I would agree also with all my colleagues here tonight. It's a really beautiful home. I would agree bringing it back to its maybe original status can be a really nice neighborhood. I do like walking back there.
All right, with that, I'm gonna make the motion. I make the motion to approve the application subject to the two conditions that I just listed, Mr. Irene. The first was that we highlight for the benefit of the construction official, the situation with regard to the fence, to ensure that there's proper sign off with regard to whatever needs to be installed relative to safety. And the second would specifically be that Mr. Kennedy make a site visit and propose a best practices construction access to the rear. And that the resolution further include the strong suggestion, it, it's outside of our, our jurisdiction, but I, I really just want to suggest you use it throughout your construction until you're done, done, done. And for the purposes of maintaining the old trees on site. And so that would be a motion to approve the application as presented tonight with the adjustment as suggested by the neighbor, even though it doesn't look quite as pretty. The decision of the board will be based on the accuracy of the record made by the applicants and the presentation of the board, as well as all drawings, rendering, surveys and site plans are referred to during the hearing. That within approval would be conditioned on substantial compliance with the four said documents and statements.
And Ms. Chairman, subject to the customary general conditions of the board, as well as the applicant complying with any and all recommendations or requirements of the board planner set forth in their review letter?
Yeah, we may want to work up that write-up so that it includes that every time, but yes. Thank you, Ms. Rakens. Thank you.
Second, Judy.
Is that Peter?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, we have a couple of administrative items, but we also had a third application we're gonna try and reach tonight. That is the, is it Ramsey? Do we still have the applicant here tonight?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. We want to bring him in.
Yeah, please. There you go, Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Ramsey, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. And start video. There you go. Good evening, Mr. Ramsey.
Hi, good evening.
Judy, do you know what are, there's the stumper, right? You're gonna get a stumper. Do you know what we're looking like in February right now?
Yeah, just give me one second.
Okay. Mr. Ramsey, we are, we're at 10:30. You know, we really don't start applications this late. Every once in a while, I have been known to drag people into this till about 11 to get something done. But it's not prudent at this point to start something at this hour. So I'm checking to see what our schedule looks like for February. And I would think that we're gonna be able to move you to first on the list in February.
I can't find the list you gave me, but I know I'm pretty sure there are one or two.
Okay, so.
Put Ramsey first?
Yeah, am I pronouncing correctly? How do you pronounce?
Ramsey, yes.
Thank you. And so what's the date of the February meeting, Judy? Do you know? We just adopted that tonight.
February 4?
Yes. February 4.
That's February 4, look for you, Mr. Ramsey.
We will make that work.
Okay, then I would make a motion to carry the Ramsey application to the February 4th meeting without any need to renotice. Ben, sorry.
Sorry, Ms. Chairman. The record reflected, I reviewed the notice materials. They appear to be in order. So if the board's inclined to carry it to the February 4th meeting without the necessary renotice, it may do so.
So my motion is to carry the application to February without the obligation to renotice. I need a second.
Second.
I don't know who got it.
And Judy, do we know where we are time-wise? Otherwise, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that motion be subject to Mr. Ramsey's standing, granting an extension of time, which the board has to act and include the February meeting so we can carry it.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to check his application data. I don't know if I have that.
We'll alleviate the necessity. Mr. Ramsey, you, you hear that the board wants to carry it to February and put you on first. So what we're gonna do is ask you to consent to an extension of time so we can carry the matter to the February 4, 2021 meeting of the board. Will you consent to the extension of time?
Yes, very well.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had a motion. We had a second. By whom?
Pat. Pat seconded.
Peter really wants it, though.
Peter really wants it, okay.
All right, sweetie. Roll call when you're ready, please, Judy. Thank you.
Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ramsey, we will see you in February. Sorry we didn't get to you tonight, but we look forward to talking to you.
Any instant parties, the Ramsey matter, 77 Will Street is being carried to the February 4, 2021 meeting of the board without the necessary renotice. Please mark your calendar accordingly. There'll be no further notice. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Chesney, we have two quick administrative items.
Bruiser Woods Resolution. I have no changes to make on the resolution. Does anybody have anything to add? Saying none, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as submitted for Bruiser Woods.
Second.
Okay, Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Can I hear Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
And we can have Mr. Cancelo, Cancelo?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Minutes from December 3rd, Judy, you made those two small changes that I sent or Jen did?
She made, she made the corrections, yes.
Did you pick up the exacerbation, Peter?
No, I did not.
I did, I did.
Somebody did.
What did it say?
It said exasperation.
There you go.
Also true.
Are you up four times?
Good one. So those, those having been amended, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from December 3rd as amended.
Second.
Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Quigley?
Yes.
Ridgway? Mr. Ridgway? I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
You're running that fast, John, you lose your right to vote. Sorry, it's America.
Oh, no, no, Jennifer's resolution.
We have Jen's resolution and then.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion if everybody saw it, but it's nice and tight. Thank you very much, Mike. We're certainly gonna miss Jen. Disappointment to lose her. Thanks again, Judy, for stepping in tonight. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution. Thanking Jen for her service.
Second.
Okay. Who seconded that? Mr. McChesney?
Yes.
Mr. Quigley?
Yes.
Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
We're done, Judy. You don't want my vote?
I, I already, I thought I asked you, sorry. I heard you down as a yes.
I'm all in. I'm a yes, thank you. I, I don't know if anybody from the public is still here or was waiting, but I certainly like to try to remember to invite the public if anybody had any comments for the board before we wrap up.
We got two people out there. Laleen and Susan O'Brien.
I see no raised hands.
I think they fell asleep.
Going twice. Going three times. Very good.
Mr. Leader, before we close?
Sure, John made a comment too.
I'd like to ask very quickly, you know, we, we're gonna try to get this advisory committee formed. And I, I would like some people's ideas about how to go about doing that. Maybe draw up a proposal or submit it as part of next month's agenda perhaps?
So can I make a suggestion? We had it in the annual report. Laleen is actually shadowing the meeting tonight. I'm not sure what happened to Susan. She was on before. But can I suggest that you reach out to both of them? I understand that they're both working as our liaison now.
Laleen and Betsy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did I say somebody else?
That's good. I think that's a great idea.
I think if you talk to them, try and understand where they're going and what they need and what they have the bandwidth for. Then if you come back to us in February and express that input, we can throw a committee together and set some direction.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? That sounds great.
I just wanted to say thank you for the reappointment. I'm looking forward to 2021 with everybody and Happy New Year before we get any later in January.
All right. Mike, would you like to say thank you? Thank you.
I, I don't think Judy's gonna say thank you now very soon.
I'll think about it.
This worked out great. We got through here tonight. Thanks again to Joe and to Judy for helping make it happen. Thanks, everybody. This is a good night. Really, really good applications tonight. Really good example of why we do what we do. And it's a really, really good work. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Todd, I, I do have a list somewhere of some applications that Jen said were ready. So I will send that to you and we'll get the, the agenda put together.
Yeah, we'll do that offline. We'll, we'll put these guys first and, you know, we'll do a typical two behind them with some sort of a communication with regard to the third, just like we did tonight, to say we may or may not be able to get to it.
Okay.
We just need a motion to close if anybody, unless anybody has anything further.
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right. All right.
Everybody stay safe.
Good night, everybody healthy. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Take care, guys.
Good night. See you around town.